We've got an unruly bunch here, so thanks for all your smiles and thanks for coming. Welcome to the August fifteenth, September 15th, regular city council meeting. And, oh my goodness, a lot of people like to talk. That's wonderful. We usually don't get many people here, so that's great. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
Schmisher?
Here.
Stein?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here. Is Nelson Hoover here? If not, then let's rise for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, last week, we had a rather tragic week. And I would like to ask everyone to have a moment of silence for Charles Kirk, Charlie Kirk, Irina Zirkowska, who was murdered, and for the school shooting in Denver. So, let's take a moment of silence. Okay, thank you so much. We have a lot of people who want to talk, so we'll have citizens' requests to speak. So, what we'd like, I'd like to do is, if you're going to talk about the excise tax, we'd like to talk about it when that comes up. So, that would also be the pool and the excise tax. We have, it's a $5 fine. We have some for four mile water. We have some about Councilwoman Tracy. And we have some about you. Me? Okay? So, and the firearms ordinance.
That's on the agenda.
Yeah, that's on the agenda, actually. Well, the first one I had laid up here was Dustin Trevathan. Dustin, come on up. So, you have three minutes, the light will go on, and I would just ask you to be concise and polite and just not use foul language or insults or anything like that. So, if you, Dustin, would you like to go ahead and we'll start the timer?
Respectfully, before the timer starts, can I ask you one question?
Yes, sir.
So, I would like to know where Tracy lives and why she's not here in person?
She's on Zoom, and her residence is in East Canyon?
Breckenridge, from what I know.
This is Emily. I'd be happy to answer that question if it helps people understand why I'm not there in the room.
Yes, go ahead, Emily.
On August 19th, my husband was found collapsed on the living room floor at a place that we have in Breckenridge. He was taken by ambulance from our home in Breckenridge to the hospital in Frisco. He was then flown by Flight for Life to St. Anthony Hospital in Lakewood and was in the intensive care unit there for a couple of days. He has now been in the hospital in Lakewood since August 20th. So, as of tomorrow, that will be four weeks. And I hope people will understand that I am spending part of every day at the hospital with my husband. Now, I don't quite understand your question about where I live. I do not live in East Canyon. I live in the middle of town. But the reason I am not there is because I value my relationship with my family and specifically with my husband, and I will spend time with him when he's in the hospital. I hope that the public can understand that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dustin, would you go ahead?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents. My name is Dustin Trevathan, and I come before you tonight not as a politician, but as a father, a husband, and a son, just like Charlie Kirk was. In the last few days, Councilwoman Emily Tracy shared an article about the tragic murder of Charlie Kirk. The article was titled "Charlie Kirk's Legacy Deserves No Mourning," published by Elizabeth Spires on September 12th in The Nation. In this article, the author describes Charlie Kirk as being hateful, bigoted, transphobic, misogynistic, and homophobic. Councilwoman Emily Tracy shared this article, and it can only be presumed that her being in agreement with the article. Sharing and agreeing with the article is one thing; people are entitled to their opinions. However, when you hold a public position and represent an entire city and are here to be the voice of those you serve, maybe some things should be kept to yourself. Furthermore, what happened next is where the line was more than just crossed. On her shared post, individuals Councilwoman Tracy associates herself with made comments celebrating Charlie Kirk's death, even going so far as to say, quote, "The world is better off without him," end quote. Let's be very clear: cheering a murder is never acceptable, not in politics, not in our community, not anywhere. A violent death should never be the source of celebration. Charlie Kirk may have been a political figure some disagreed with, but he was also a husband, a father, and a son. I feel that personally, because I am those things too. I can also tell you without hesitation, no wife, no child, and no parent should ever have to hear people celebrating the killing of someone they love. And if Councilwoman Tracy truly did nothing wrong, then why was the article she shared and the comments celebrating his death quietly removed from her page? That looks like less, looks less like innocence and more like recognition that it was, in fact, inappropriate, especially only removing the post after she drew unwanted attention to it. Our leaders should set an example of compassion and integrity, even when we disagree politically. Instead, what we have seen here is tolerance, even validation of the idea that it is acceptable to cheer and congratulate a man's murder. That is not leadership, and that is not decency. For that reason, I am calling for the immediate removal of Emily Tracy from our city's council. This is not about left or right. It's not, it is about right and wrong, more so about having human decency. This council and this community deserve better. It shall also be noted that I have launched a formal petition requesting her removal as well. Thank you for allowing my voice to be heard tonight, and I will end in this. In regard to me standing in front of you at this very second, my email to the board and mayor last night, and in respect to anyone and everyone that agrees with the immediate removal of Councilwoman Tracy and Emily Tracy, let it be known that we are Charlie Kirk. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. It really nice to hold down on the applause and the loudness, because we'd like to have the next person up here. Kaye Hunsaker? Kaye?
My name is Kaye Hunsaker, and I'm a resident of Canyon City, and I was stunned at the recent assassination of Charlie Kirk. I won't lie and say that I ever listened to him, because I don't listen to podcasts at all. I'm too busy. But however, I cannot help but be bombarded by the coverage of the killing, this killing has caused. It's been overwhelmingly positive, with much outpouring of prayer for his poor wife and children. I tried not to focus on the negative, as the left-leaning liberals have been spewing for quite a few months. But the ugly turn of democracy being threatened by myself, that I'm a Nazi, a fascist, a racist, and any other horrific lie has taken a fever pitch. But it's this hate-filled talk that ignites violence, and I was horrified when a member of our Canyon City Council put a derogatory remark about the death of Charlie Kirk that galvanized me to demand accountability. But something more shocking than her vile words is that she isn't even eligible to sit on this council. Her permanent residence, according to our assessor, Stacy Seifert, is she lives at this house, but her residence shows that she lives in Breckenridge, Colorado. And this was provided to me by a private detective, showing that her permanent residence is in Breckenridge, Colorado, and it says Emily Tracy, no one else. And I don't care if she spends time here or not. Your Article II says nothing about a second residence. And Ms. Tracy receives a hefty senior discount for her permanent residence in Summit County, Breckenridge. That makes her a permanent residence of Breckenridge, not Canyon City, and no person shall be eligible to any elective office unless he or she shall be a resident and qualified elector of the city of Canyon City for one year immediately preceding the date of the election that determine his or her election. This is your Article II of your bylaws. So, that's all I have to say. But I think that before she votes on anything for our city that affects me and my livelihood and all of us, I ask that you remove her from this council and prevent her from voting on things that she has no right to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ronald Blanchard. I live in Canyon City, Colorado. I'm in the county, I'm not in the city limits, but I too saw Emily Tracy's post, and I was quite outraged. And I don't know if the city council realizes this, at point in fact, I spoke to Mayor Troutman this morning, and he told me a lot of people had called him over the weekend on his day off, and I was one of them. And anyways, I, I thought when she put that repost on of "His legacy deserves no mourning," and then the other post that Sandy Sorenson put down below, which was attached to her post, it outraged me. This is a Christian community, this is a Christian area. I don't know if everybody does. I go to church, I'm no better than anybody else, I talk like a truck driver. But I try to, try to do my best. Now, I don't know if she realizes it or not, but on YouTube, on Charlie's post on YouTube, he has 4.5 million followers. On his Turning Point, he has 3.6 million followers. That is a total of 8.1 million people. Now, you know, if something like this was to get posted out there, you guys could get a whole lot of emails by a whole lot of people, a lot of mad people. And I too think, myself, that with what Emily Tracy said was, her post carries no power with me except disgust. There's, we, I am a conservative person, but I don't go around spouting off when things happen, and most of the time, us conservative people are pretty quiet, and we're pretty meek and mild, because a lot of times, we believe, well, our Lord will handle this. Well, sometimes I think he needs a little help. And myself, I too am calling for either her immediate resignation or for you guys to vote her out of this office. We don't need anybody in that is that far left in this city. This city is a small city, and we're pretty much on the red side of everything when it comes to voting. So, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronald. I saw her. Where is she? There she is.
Good evening, Council. My name's Mandy Reed. I reside at 75 Charmigan Trail. You guys know that, because I've been here a lot lately. I thank you for your time. I see that Councilwoman Tracy is here online, and as it was mentioned, I will just inform everyone that I will be submitting a public records request tomorrow for the IP address of where she's attending from tonight, so we can go ahead and vouch for that. I want to address the sharing of the nation article by Councilwoman Tracy that harshly criticizes Charlie Kirk, accusing him of what was already mentioned, of racism, misogyny, homophobia, and demeaning people of faith. These are serious claims, but they're also opinions framed as fact, and they don't represent the values on record of Mr. Kirk or many of the people in our community. Here in Canyon City and Fremont County as well, the voting record tells a clear story. In the most recent presidential election, around 68% of voters here supported Republican candidates, while about 29 voted Democrat. That means that an overwhelming majority of our neighbors hold conservative values. I in no way want to impede Councilwoman Tracy's right to free speech. She is entitled to her beliefs. However, her Facebook page identifies her as being with the city of Canyon City government. She blocked a comment on her post, she deleted her post later, and she would not engage with the community as a representative of government. Many of the people in the audience, myself included, have screenshots that are timestamped of these events. Councilwoman Tracy also has shared online what I find to be even more disparaging. She called out local businesses that are Christians and Republicans, and encouraged others to never do business with them. These also have screenshots on social media. This is really concerning as a citizen of Canyon City. Councilwoman Tracy, I believe, and it's always scary to say these things like this, is one of our at-large councilwomen. So, she represents not just a specific district, right? She's not District Two representing downtown. She's supposed to be representing the community at large, her constituency. Charlie Kirk has encouraged civic engagement, protecting constitutional liberties, and speaking about Christian values. Whether or not you agree with him on every point, to dismiss him with slander and not leadership is division. Council has a responsibility to represent all of the people of Canyon City. Amplifying an article that misrepresents someone on labels and, instead of substance, excludes more than includes. I would encourage all of council to speak about how you feel about the recent events as well. Your constituency is listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Where's Steve?
Hi, my name's Steve Wilson. I live at 621 Twin Flower. I've been a member of this community since 1957. I'm one of the few in this room that probably say I was born here. Fourth generation. My father was, worked the penitentiary for years.
Lord, your life's made.
Oh, and we're a Christian family, and my family's kind of tired of the left-wing violence that's going on, the talk of violence going on, and us being afraid to wear a hat that make America great again, and Charlie Kurtz was correcting that. He went to college campuses to talk to the children that are, aren't being taught the things at home and in school that they needed to be taught, and he would correct them about the right and wrong of the Bible and society and the right way to live life. And to, to say he deserves no mercy for his murder and the violent way he died is just wrong by one of our city councilmen? Really? This community has changed so much in my lifetime. People come here, they want to enjoy our quality of life, and they get here and want to change it. Really? We've got a great quality of life here, and new people come in here because we have it, and stop trying to change it. We don't need representatives like Emily Tracy on this city council board. She needs to resign immediately.
Tim Walsworth? Where's Tim? Come on down.
As you might guess, I'm going to make comments about Emily Tracy as well. I'd like to be the first to thank her for exposing to our community just who you really are, and regarding your tactless use of online posts regarding the political assassination last week of Charlie Kirk. You must really think very little of many of your constituents, Ms. Tracy. The headline "Charlie Kirk's Legacy Deserves No Mourning" is pretty disgusting. While you share the same First Amendment right protections of freedom of speech, your constituents also reserve those rights of freedom of speech, and also to respond to your insensitive, tactless comments regarding Charlie Kirk's assassination. Your comment illustrates to me a lack of humanity, and quite frankly, intellect, and proves you should not be making any decisions for our community. We deserve better. I urge the city council tonight for the immediate removal of your position. And yes, I understand she's also posted that she plans to resign at the end of her term and no longer seek reelection. But really, she needs to be removed from making any decisions for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Tim. So, we don't, I don't think in the charter, we have the ability to kiss someone off council. I wish it was so. Well, now, just wait a minute. Don't be shouting at me. Just wait a minute, just a minute. Is that true, our attorney?
That is correct. There is no removal process. There is no removal process in the charter by council. If someone were to be found to have physically established residency elsewhere, that could be a basis for being ill-eligible for council. That is unfortunately a very complicated matter of proof, because in Colorado, the way you establish residency is not only where you put your head down every night, but also whether you intend to return. So, it is a very subjective determination as to whether residency is first established and then maintained. So, council does not have the ability to remove a member of council under the charter, but if someone were to have moved out of the city, it could come up with a process for doing so. It would be a hearing, and it would be a fairly long process. Typically, the process for removing someone from council is recall, and I recognize that because we are so close to the November election, that that is not an option. But the Constitution of the state of Colorado, which obviously the city is subject to, has recall as the remedy for removing a council member.
Okay, is that clear? But just a minute, if you want to talk, come up to the podium. Okay, but we have the authority for censure.
You do, and there is a recent United States Supreme Court case from 2022 that reaffirms that right.
Okay. Then I would, I would entertain a resolution of censure if the council so wants that done. Would someone like to make a motion?
And what, Mr. Mayor, if council desires some sort of resolution of censure, that would, I think, require direction to me to draft such a resolution to bring back to a council meeting.
Yeah, we'll come back, Nelson. Okay, go ahead, Tim.
Well, in that case, this is a tough call, but I'd like to make that motion, listening to our constituents of censure, and to see if we can move it on and then bring it back to council.
Okay, motion's been made. Well, can I get a second?
Now, for your community, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just, I'd like to, I'd like to understand the censure process and what that looks like. Could you, Attorney, sorry, Attorney Hoffman, please, like, explain what those steps are?
Hold it just a minute, please, please.
Could you please explain what those steps are, what the process is, what does censure actually mean, and, like, what, yeah, could you just walk us through what that, what that is?
So, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to read from a summary of the United States Supreme Court case known as Houston Community College System versus Wilson from 2022, and I'm going to give you the background and the holdings, because I think that's probably a better way to answer your question. The background is a member of the Board of Trustees for a public community college district brought a 1983 action in state court against the district alleging that the board violated his First Amendment right, free speech rights, when it publicly censured him for publicly criticizing other board members and for filing multiple lawsuits challenging the board's actions. The United, the United States Court of Appeals reversed and remanded, denied the district court's request for rehearing, and then this, the Supreme Court took jurisdiction. And it held that it would not review the individual who was censured's argument that the board's nonverbal punishments violated his First Amendment rights, and that the board's public censure of a trustee was not a material, materially adverse action that could raise actionable First Amendment retaliation claims. So, in other words, a censure is just a public determination that the remainder of the council thinks that particular council member did something wrong. Because it is not what the court referred to as a materially adverse action, it doesn't have the type of due process rights if you were, for example, removing someone from a job, because it is simply a public statement that you think wrongdoing or something bad happened. That's all a censure is. So, there is no process associated with it, other than placing it on a public meeting agenda.
I guess, I mean, I certainly hear and understand that there is a lot of emotion in the room, and I really appreciate, apologies, I will butcher your last name, Mr. Dustin, but I really appreciated the way that you spoke about it with regard to everyone having a right to free speech and that being enshrined in our constitution, and that there being a concern about how that free speech has been used, I think, as Ms. Reed said, by somebody who on their private Facebook page has identified themselves as a city council member. So, I think we're, we're entering into some gray area, and I, for one, like, I believe in free speech, and I believe in due process, and I wouldn't want to, like, move forward with a censure without also hearing from Councilwoman Tracy, even though I understand that maybe due process isn't required since it isn't material, but I wouldn't feel right, like, I'm not on social media that much. I, I hear what everyone is saying, and I feel the emotion behind it, but I also want to gather as many facts as I can before doing something like that. So, that's how I...
Okay, please, 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 please. Okay, we're, hold it, just, oh, whoop, can't y'all talk at once? You can't talk at once. Thank you. So, the motion has been made, the motion, please, please, would you like to come on the podium? Come on up. You've got three minutes. Tell me who you are.
I reside at 249 Dozer Avenue, so I am slightly into the county. However, how would she feel if, God forbid, anything happened to her husband that is currently in the hospital? How would she feel if we celebrated his death? She's celebrating someone else's husband, someone else's father, someone else's son? That's not okay. I guarantee she would not be happy. As a citizen, if she were sitting over here and we were celebrating, a councilperson was celebrating her husband's death, she would, she would want the removal of that person immediately. She needs to put herself in the city's citizens' spots.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Would you, ma'am, would you fill out a form, please? Ma'am, would you go over there and fill out a form, bring it? Ma'am, would you go over there and fill out a form, bring it over here? Do you have a form, ma'am?
No. I can get one, though.
Okay, well, please fill one out.
You want me to fill one out first?
No, 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 go ahead, and then you fill it out and bring it up. We just want to know who talked.
All righty. My name is Lisa Pascoe. I live at 514, or 501 Meadowland Way, sorry, here in Canyon. I have lived here all my life. I graduated from Canyon City High. I've got four sets of grandparents buried in Lakeside. My, my problem isn't just with the situation with her, but also the remarks that she made. And I have the proof right here. And it's, the, the first one is the emblems that are in the White House in the Oval Office. And it was posted by Inside Edition, and she made the comment, "I want to see the plastic moldings on the fireplace melt, or maybe the fire is fake too." And this is inside the White House. And she also made the comment about when he struck the boat that was carrying all the fentanyl, that everybody in that regime should face or should pay the price. I know you guys have to follow the rules. Thank you, sir. I would like you guys to also put in a motion or a resolution, however you need to do it, to put it where if something like this happens in the future, we can get the person off the board because this is unacceptable in every way, shape, and form.
Well, if, okay, you're wasting our time here. So we put up several, we put up, no, I didn't say, your applause and your loud noises are keeping her from talking, okay? No, no, you keep her from talking.
Let him talk.
So we put, to change the Charter, that's what you're talking about, and that's what has to be voted on. And probably that's one of the things we put in. There were several changes years ago, nine of them, they were all voted down. So we would like to change it, too.
Then let's put something in to get it changed. Because honestly, censoring, censoring is not enough. This is ridiculous.
Unfortunately, that's all we have.
Nope, I understand.
Okay. Thank you. Now, fill out a form and bring it up. Fill out a form, ma'am. Fill out a form.
And Mayor, Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead.
While the city is free to put a charter amendment in front of the voters that would provide and give authority to council to remove a council member, that charter amendment would likely be unconstitutional under the Colorado Constitution, which Canyon is still subject to because the power to remove a council member is reserved to the people. That is recall. And, and again, the timing in this case makes it so that recall is not available because Ms. Tracy's term expires at the end of the year, at the November election. But that is what the Colorado Constitution provides as the remedy, is it is reserved to you as the people through the power of recall.
Well, we can't let her be an officer.
Well, could you come up and talk to us about it, or? Yes, go ahead, Dustin.
A little bit more perspective, if it was one of these law enforcement officers that serve our city as a public official, a public servant, I promise you, they'd be on admin leave pending an investigation right now. So I don't see what the difference is. After what she's done, after what she's displayed publicly, and she's supposed to be representing us, representing this city, how can you not want to remove her?
I think the distinction, unfortunately, is that one was elected by the people. That's, that's really a distinction we're having a hard time getting over.
Well, she's proven that we've made a mistake.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Would you fill, Dusty, if you want to fill out a form? Yes, ma'am, did you fill out a form?
Yes, I filled out a form, but it's about a different topic. I need to get to a child's event. Can I please speak?
What's your name?
My name is Patty Witkowski.
Okay, go ahead, Patty, real quick.
Thank you. Apologize for going out of order, but I have a child's event at the high school to get to by seven. My name is Patty Witkowski, and I come to you from multiple angles as a supporter of both the pool and the excise tax on recreational businesses. I understand the inextricable ties between education and health. I'm a 16-year resident of Canyon City School, of Canyon City, raising two children in this community, and I'm also pursuing a master's degree in health promotion. And I'm currently in a course about how resources to support healthy community benefit the community as a whole. I'm also an avid traveler who has engaged in countless tourist and recreational activities in a variety of countries and states across the U.S. I'm also a customer of businesses in this, in this city and know that it's common that when prices increase that those can and are passed along to customers. Recall the egg shortage and the upcharge on omelets. As a customer, I have to accept rising costs without truly knowing where the additional costs are going, sometimes to cover additional costs associated with doing business and sometimes because businesses want to increase profits. It's a reality of the economy in which we operate. In terms of the concern about competition among recreational companies, it's important to remember that the recreational activities that we have here in Canyon City are unique and tourists will pay for them just as they have been for decades. In fact, we won't know until we try, but I hope that this excise tax and the data can prove that these, these fears did not come to fruition. For example, the cost of recreational activities has continued to increase over time, and still the tourists come. If I wanted to experience something as a tourist, unless it was a cost extraordinarily outside of my own budget, I wouldn't hesitate to participate in it for a few additional dollars. From living here in Canyon City for 16 years, I know that there, that when there are challenges, Canyon City can come together to figure out creative solutions, and this time can be no different. I ask, how can we leverage a pool as a cost-efficient recreation activity for tourists to make a weekend out of a rafter train trip? How can this marketing of an aquatic facility lead to additional revenues at hotels and restaurants? Is there another benefit the city can provide to these businesses that are incurring the excise tax that negates the perceived financial burden of the task, tax? The excise tax concept is proven in multiple communities and is best, is the best option for Canyon City and has been given, and has, and given the hesitancy of residents to increase their property tax. Even a small amount each year, this is the best way to go. It will decrease the burden on our citizens as well as allow us to reinvest in the quality of life for our residents. As this decision is made about the wording of the excise tax later tonight, it is necessary to recall the Canyon City Vision Statement. Canyon City is a vibrant, attractive, and safe community that values quality of life, adventure, and prosperity. I support a sustainable approach to ensuring that there are, that these, that ensuring there are operating costs for the aquatic facility voted by the citizens to be built that is passed on to tourists via an excise tax on all recreational businesses that operate within Canyon City to ensure a share of the burden, but also ensure fair competition and equal prize, pride for what will result in terms of the health and well-being of Canyon City. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty. Rusty? Go ahead.
My name's Rusty Lake. We own several businesses here in town. I would like to ask Ms. Tracy, since our hands are tied and we, the people, have no power to remove her. All over this country, people have been fired for what she did. And that's, that's in private corporations, in schools, and in public office. So I would like to ask Ms. Tracy to do the honorable thing, since we cannot remove her and resign.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you fill out a sheet?
I did.
It's right there? Could you, okay, when you're done, bring it up here.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Peggy Massey. I am someone who grew up here, just like the gentleman from 1957. Apparently, we're the best thing that ever happened besides the Chevy. I went to, I went to McKinley School until fifth and sixth grade, and then I went to Wilson School. I went to what is now where the administration building is. I was the last class to go through it, and I've about had it. Ms. Tracy, if you have any class at all, you will quit, you will quit right now, just go away, okay? You messed up, move on with your life, and we'll move on with ours. I don't want to hear all the legal mumbo jumbo, just have, just have some decency in some class and don't come back. Moving on, we're going to talk about the excise tax, and we're going to tax this, we're going to tax that, we're going to like, we're going to tax this right behind the back door, blah, 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 and I'm done. I've talked about this for years. I don't have the money to fill out a page like the man at the train station. If you pull this up, you'll see a map over here. One block from here is 20 acres in the heart of this town, and we are the county seat. It's the territorial prison, which is nothing more than an infirmary for the state of Colorado. There's probably a pool already in there. There's a baseball field. That is a, that is a climbing wall. It hooks up to the hogbacks, which is now part of the recreation, which, while I'm on the subject, should not be the Canyon City Recreation District. It should be the Fremont County. I'm tired of them, too. If you really want to do something, but you know what? When I've talked about how do we acquire the prison? How do we acquire it? I have had people that are sitting on this council scoff at me and say, good luck with that. We're, we're out of dreams? Why can we not acquire that? I was a registered nurse. I've delivered half the babies in this town. I don't know the first thing about writing something or engineers or what it takes or grants or how you talk to our crazy-ass pollists. How do you do anything? I don't know how to do any of that. But if we acquired that prison and turned that into something special, special, you could have yourselves, you could be running marathons, starting at the Royal Gorge, coming down now where it hits Tunnel Drive, run them all the way out to Florence, out to Penrose, and then they could end down here where there's a live concert going. You could revitalize Main Street. People would quit driving here to go to Salida. Oh, no, man, I don't go there.
Ma'am?
You don't go to Canyon? Oh, that place is so cool. They got a place there, they eat, there's even like old bars still on some of the bathrooms.
Okay.
There's so much we could do.
Thank you so much. I've lost track.
So we've got a motion.
Okay. We've made a motion. I've asked for a second, and then we'll have discussion. So I am asking for a second.
Mr. Mayor, I will, I will second that emotion. Because I would, I would like to hear what Councilwoman Tracy has to say.
Okay, fair enough. Any discussion on that? Emily, would you like to, you have your hand up, go right ahead.
Step down.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's all let her talk, so give her a minute.
Excuse me, am I, is it my turn? I can't.
Yes, go right ahead, Emily, go ahead.
Thank you. Because this item is not on the agenda, I'm not sure that's even appropriate to have a motion and a second and a vote on this, but I'll leave that to the attorney. But I do have a few things I want to say. I could say a lot more, but we have a lot on the agenda, and I don't want to take any more away from it than what's necessary. First, I do want to thank folks who spoke for your Christian empathy for my situation, except I did not hear any. Second, I want to say every murder of any person is inexcusable and horrific. It is a terrible act, and whoever commits murder against any person should be held accountable under the law. Third, I want to say, I shared an article written by someone else. I did not comment on that article, and I'm not going to comment on it now, but if we are all going to be attacked for what we share on social media, then I would suggest that we all need to be off of social media by the end of the day today. Mandy Reed asked for my IP address to be investigated. Where am I tonight? So let me be perfectly clear. I am spending part of every day and have for four weeks at St. Anthony Hospital in Lakewood, Colorado. Because Breckenridge is an hour and a quarter from Lakewood, I am there part of the time. And my son lives 15 minutes from the hospital. I would not, absolutely would not give you his address. I don't think that's appropriate or required. But I spend about every other night at my son's house, and thank God I have a place to stay so that I can spend long hours at the hospital. There's a lot going on with my husband's health. It's not appropriate for me to go into great detail about it, but I'll tell you, he's not doing well. They're considering putting in a feeding tube later this week. So I would appreciate it. If people cannot express empathy about that, then just don't say anything. I also want to address the accusations that it's not legal for me to be on council. I've had a home in Canyon City continuously since 1977. I have the same house, and I live in the same house that I purchased in 1978. That has not changed. There were a period of years in the early 2000s when I moved my voter registration to my Breckenridge address. In the year 2020, I moved my voter registration back to Canyon City, partly because I was very much involved with multiple community issues, including the high price of electricity from Black Hills Energy and including the Superfund site, which I've worked on off and on since the late 1970s. We need more help, by the way. So I changed my voter registration back to Canyon City in 2020. Why at that point? Because I ran a small issue campaign that was on the ballot regarding our electricity costs. It was an issue campaign to convince the city to not renew the franchise with Black Hills so that we could explore options, and our issue campaign was successful. So I am a legal resident and I'm a legal voter in Canyon City, and I think people need to be careful about what they accuse anyone of. I have one more thing I want to say. I, I'm very sad to say, I'm very sad to say that this has really gotten out of hand. I am sorry. I will apologize for people who have looked at my Facebook page and didn't like what I shared or what I said. I have changed my security settings on there so I won't be offending as many people in the future. I also want to say that this feels like a lynch mob, and maybe I shouldn't use that term, but that's what it's felt like. I have dealt with this ever since yesterday while I'm also trying to be at the hospital in Lakewood. I would say.
Okay, hold it, no, no, no. Shh, 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 shh.
Excuse me, I, I would like to finish what I'm saying. If you want to have the ability to speak in the way that I'm speaking, then run for council. I would like to finish what I'm saying, and that is.
Please.
Let's don't treat each other this way. I want to read a poem. This was written by Pastor Martin Niemoller after World War II. I'm not going to go into the full history of it, but he was a man who in the 1930s thought that Nazi Germany was really going to be a good thing for everybody, that was going to put Germany back on the map. But he realized after a period of years that that just was not the case. And eventually, I believe it was after the war, he wrote this poem. And again, Pastor Martin Niemoller wrote this poem called "First They Came." And this is how I feel right now. First, they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew.
Okay, please, let her, let her talk. Let her talk.
Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me. The mob mentality can hit anyone. Now, again, I'm just going to finish by saying, I'm sorry that this has become the issue that it has become. I need to devote all of my efforts at this time in taking care of my husband and making sure the hospital does everything that he needs. And that's all I have to say tonight. I was voted onto the council by the voters of Canyon City. I feel that I have a responsibility and a duty to finish my term. That's my intention. If I receive more threats, then law enforcement will be informed of those threats, and then they will deal with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Would you like to talk? Yes, ma'am?
I think what I'm always interested in is solving underlying issues, and I think the biggest underlying issue that I see here is social media usage by publicly elected officials. So I know that we have a code of conduct for how we'll all behave, like in an official capacity when we are city council members, but we live in a really small town, and social media is social media. So I think I, what I would really like to see is maybe not a change to the Charter because it sounds like that might be unconstitutional, but, at least according to the state of Colorado, but a change to our code of conduct so that, you know, obviously, freedom of speech is a thing, and people should be allowed to do what they want on their, their private time, but in way, in venues where we are identifying ourselves as, you know, publicly elected. officials, I think we maybe just need to make that distinction a little bit more clear. And if, if that's what we're doing, then I do think that we should abstain from all partisan political activity. Because I just, I mean, we're a nonpartisan board, and I think if we are identifying ourselves as being part of that board, then I think that we should not be engaging in that, on that venue. But that isn't part of our current code of conduct. Like, our current code of conduct doesn't say anything about social media because social media is fairly recent. So, I think what I would really like us to have on the agenda at the next little city council meeting is a conversation around that so that we can prevent this kind of stuff from happening in the future. Because I don't think, I don't know, I just, I don't think that, that we should, as locally-elected officials, be engaged in partisan political activity i- in venues where we have identified ourselves as city officials. I just don't think that that's, that's appropriate. But I'm just one voice, and I think that it would be worthwhile to really have a conversation around a social media code of conduct for our, for our body.
Yeah, I agree. It's a nonpartisan. So, any more discussion from council?
And Mayor, the, I would just say the motion is only to direct me to bring back a resolution, so it would be a written resolution. So, just to address Councilmember Tracy's concern about the council taking action on something that's not on the agenda, you're merely directing me to bring something back for council consideration at the next meeting.
Yes, understand that. Okay, we're going to call roll.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Nay.
Tracy?
Aye.
It passes then, right?
I didn't hear you say me. Aye.
Okay. So, the next council meeting, we'll come back with that resolution. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
Can we also please add that agenda item about our code of conduct on social media policy? I can make it as a motion if needed, but I think it's worthwhile.
We can direct our attorney to come up, can we, or who? Go ahead.
I, I do have a question for Councilmember Schmisher. Would this be better at a general government meeting or?
Sure. I'm happy, I'd, I'd like to have a fulsome conversation before we actually have a, a draft policy. So, yeah, happy to have it added to a general government meeting if there's general agreement on that.
Yeah, thinking of it, fine, and I would ask all of you, when we have this discussion on social media, we'd like your input. And oftentimes, I sit here with one person in the audience, and I would really appreciate people coming in. I'd love to hear from you. I don't get anything, except when I leave church, all of a sudden, my, my phone number is lambasted with something that happened. And you need to show up. You need to show up the next meeting. We're going to talk about the general government meeting, which will be next, in October, and we're going to discuss the social media. I want to hear from you. You know a lot more than I do. My kids know more than I do about social media. So, uh, so the next meeting, we'll come back with the resolution. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. My name is Kaye Hunseger. Um, yeah, I'm not going to dwell on the social media free speech thing, but I am a little concerned that as of today, with our assessor, her address for her, her place here in Canyon City lists the address as PO Box 8738 Breckenridge, Colorado, as her permanent primary address. I would like to know how you registered in our city when your primary address is in Breckenridge. How did you tell the people here that you're going to vote when your primary residence, not your secondary, your primary residence is in Breckenridge, Colorado? And, and as I said, nothing here says that a secondary residence is mentioned at all. It says your primary residence.
Okay, thank you. Are you, yes, we're, we're done with this issue, by the way. Emily, what?
My name is Billy Masson. I reside at 728 Page Drive Drive. I've lived here since 2020, and Councilwoman Tracy, I, I actually think that you should do us all a favor and resign. We do have a petition going around, and last I looked, right now, we have 161 signatures. How many more do we need to get you out of office before your end of term? Thank you, and please do us a favor and resign immediately.
Okay. Okay. So, that, we'd like, I'd like to move on. We've got lots of people who want to talk about several issues. You have one, something real?
I was prepared, but nothing. I was going to address the room.
What? Oh.
I was going to address the room.
Okay. All right. I'd like to move on to the next whole group of people that want to talk. What? Any six, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think we understand, so.
I literally, if it's going to move nothing forward, I just wanted to return a poem with a poem. Because this room is full of lovers of Charlie Kirk and his movement and the way he was. That's the whole thing. And she gave us a poem I'd like to give her a look at.
Go right ahead.
And it's titled "How Did You Die?" by Edmund Vanz Cook from 1901, and I'd like to dedicate it to Charlie Kirk. It says, "Did you tackle that trouble that came your way with a resolute heart and cheerful? Or did you hide your face from the light of day with a craven soul and fearful? Troubles a ton or troubles an ounce? Trouble is what you make it, and isn't the fact you hurt that counts, but only how did you take it? So, you're beaten to earth, well, well, that's that, come up with a smiling face. It's nothing against you to fall down flat, but to lie there, that's disgrace. The harder your throne, the higher you'll bounce, so be proud of your blackened eye. It isn't the fact you're hurt that counts, but how did you fight and why? And though you be done to death, what then? If you battled the best you could? If you played your role in a world of men, why the critics will call it good? Death comes with a crawl or comes with a pounce? And whether it's slow or spry? It isn't the fact you're dead that counts, but only how did you die?" Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
I have just a PSA, my deal, I gotta leave, I got the kids. I have people currently requesting the petition linked to sign. I also have currently 173 signatures. So, I'm going to leave this on this table back here for everybody in the room that doesn't have social media, and then I'm going to go home to my children. Thank you guys for your time, and thank you for allowing me to say-
Okay, thank you all. We, we have a big agenda. Go ahead, put it back there, or give it to Denise. We'd like to move on. I have Melissa Roll. Where's Melissa? Come on up. Four Mile Water Question.
Hi, so my name's Marissa, and I own a home in Four Mile, actually on the golf course. And last week, on the eighth, I had a letter taped to my door from the owner of the golf course, Byron, and essentially, it was talking about the water raised to the golf course and the raise of a 75% increase. And then later in the letter, he just talked about how it could force the course to close its doors. So, I know that's not on the agenda tonight, but, you know, as a homeowner out there, I'm a little concerned. So, I was just wondering if I could get, if there's anywhere online that I could follow, you know, what's happening with that, or if you guys have another meeting set in place that I could attend?
Yeah, we, we do, and that's, that's far ahead of the skis. There, we're talking about, there has, because of the costs-
Sure.
-there's going to be an increase, but not 75%. I don't know where that came from necessarily, and I've been to all the meetings. So, would you want to touch base with that, Ryan, or?
Or could I just jump in on that? Just real quick, Canyon City water, and it's been public, there's been some public meetings, everybody could have attended, they are looking at raising water rates by a percentage so much for like the next 10 years, and that, that's going to come out to be close to your number there. So, that might be part of that. Okay? Just to let you know.
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks. I think the other thing that we talked about at a recent general government meeting was ensuring that everybody, all of the different user groups, whether you're a hair salon on Main Street, or the golf course, or the city, that everybody's actually paying what their water costs.
Sure.
And for a long time, I think 15 years at this point, both the city and the golf course have been paying far less than what their water actually costs. And because the water fund is an enterprise fund, it has to be like balanced out at the end, and that means that other groups, mostly multifamily homes, and every other business in town has been paying more than what their water costs. So, what we talked about in the general government meeting is a desire to see the city actually pay for the water that they're using, and also to make sure that the golf course isn't paying, that other businesses aren't having to subsidize the golf course without their knowledge or consent. But what we had talked about was doing it slowly over time. I think we had talked about a three-year phased-in plan, and also ensuring that, you know, the golf course is looking at switching from treated water to raw water, so looking at economic development ways to help get them through that transition period so that the other businesses on town aren't having to carry that cost on their back, but the golf course isn't looking at like a huge transition right away. So, I know the economic development manager was going to be reaching out to the golf course to talk to them about that. I don't know how those conversations have gone, but maybe we could get an update on that as part of the city administrator report at the next council meeting.
Yeah, we could do that.
But, but as the mayor and councilmember Dennehy mentioned, like, this is not tomorrow by any stretch of the imagination. This is like years and slowly and phased, because nobody wants to see an abrupt transition or lowering of property values or a golf course going away. Like, that is certainly not, not what anybody wants.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, as a homeowner, I'm like, ah.
And if your email address is on that form, I'm happy to personally send you an email when that is on the agenda, just so that you know.
I did not write my email on there, but I will.
Ah, Denise will bring you a sticky. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Melissa. Jeff, Horton?
I'm going to address the issue because I filled out a paper. A lot of people didn't, and I got cut off.
What?
I'm going to say what I need to say.
I didn't cut you off. What are you talking about?
Well, I didn't get called, and I put in a paper. First of all, why does she think this is acceptable? Because I'll tell you why. First of all, you, the way you treat people, I don't agree with. Look at that smirk right away. Everything's funny to you.
No, it's not.
One day, I walked out of here and you said the zoo-
I'm being friendly. You're not friendly.
Excuse me, I'm talking. You said the zoo got let out early. I don't appreciate that. You didn't say it to my face, but you said it when I got out in the hall. Then you want to talk about a man's attorney showing up and him not, and calling, telling him he has no guts? That's not acceptable. And that's why she sits here and does what she does, because all of you guys want to do what you do up there and think you're untouchable. I'm running for city council, and I want to thank everybody out here for coming because this is what we need, and this does not happen. So, I'm very happy that you all came and voiced your opinion. And if we don't hold them accountable, then they keep doing what they do. If you want this to stop, vote in the right people, and you need to set a better example.
Thank you.
It's not, you're not okay.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Always laughing and thinking things are funny?
No, I'm thinking, I'm being friendly.
No, you're not.
You don't understand that. You don't understand friendly, apparently. Okay, Four Mile, Jeff, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Hello. My name is Jeff Horton. I live at 3556 Saddle Drive in Canyon City at Four Mile Golf Course. I actually wrote a letter to all you guys up there, kind of basically saying what I need to say, so I'm going to read what I said, what I wrote to you guys. After moving from California, my wife and I made the decision to settle in Canyon City. This is her home for the last, was 20 years ago. She lived here in Colorado, in Canyon City. Right now, this is actually the first house I ever bought at 56 years old. And getting this letter on my door basically telling me that our water taxes is going to go up 75%, and it does state that on there. I understand what you were saying, Amy, regarding it's going to be spread out. Completely understand that. But the fact is, my value of my house, if that golf course closes, my value of that house is going to drop sus- a lot. I chose to move here because the natural beauty, community charm, and promise of throughout development drew us here. Basically, what they're planning on doing for that is going to create jobs, create revenue, create money for Canyon City. A lot of people come from different locations to play golf. My first time playing golf here with my father-in-law was four years ago at Four Mile. That course is awesome. If we close it, it's going to really screw everything up, especially for the community. We need to keep the water tax down. I understand because everybody wants to pay. We got to do it, but don't make it such a big one. Spread it out. 2%, 1%, I know it's low, but still. You got to do something to make it to where the people that are buying there, I got people that are looking at property and they're going to build more houses. We got to get those people in here. I left my kids in California. I have six kids. I have 12 grandbabies. All my kids are adults. I'm living my life here. This is where I want to retire. I work for Estes Rockets. Everybody knows what Estes Rockets is, right? Okay? I run that place. So, we need to keep people here spending money here in Canyon City. I eat in Canyon City every Friday night. I spend my money in Canyon City. I take my interns from Estes to Canyon City events. That's what we need to do. We need to bring the revenue back to Canyon City. Do something to make it affordable for people so everybody can live here happily and, sorry, I'm not, but that, this is my first community, this is the first time I ever spoke in front of a council, as you can tell. So, just bear with me, but I think if we can figure out a way to reduce the water tax and make it affordable for people that want to buy houses in Canyon City, then this place will grow even bigger. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Did quite well. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Kathy, go ahead.
We're past it.
We're past it, huh? Okay. I have, all the rest are for the excise tax, and I have Justin Scott on the firearms. Do you want to wait till we bring that up, Justin?
Yes.
Is Justin still here? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, Justin, thank you. So, let's move on to employee recognition. Where's Butch? Come on down.
I know you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, I thought we were going to do councilmember announcements and board updates.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't miss that. Butch, could you just wait a second or two?
Very much.
Let's go ahead to councilmember announcements. I kind of wrapped that all in together. Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to remind the community of the regular monthly meeting of the Cotter Superfund Site Community Advisory Group. It's tomorrow night, Tuesday night, at 6:30 PM at the Holiday Inn. It's one of the in-person meetings, so folks from the State Department of Public Health and Environment, and from the Federal Environmental Protection Agency will be here in person along with others who are working on the project. I am going to say something that I've said other times, but I think it bears repeating, and that is, if the community doesn't care enough about the cleanup of this contaminated site, there will be a lot of things that will be ignored. So, it's very important for community members who either live near the site or for other reasons are concerned about what the cleanup plan will do and what it will be, you need to attend these meetings, listen, ask questions. I, I will say that members of the Community Advisory Group are very concerned about the plan that has now been approved for what's called Operable Unit Two and Operable Unit Three, which is basically everything outside of the restricted site itself. There's not nearly enough testing being planned. We had advocated, for example, for testing in the town of Brookside. That's not going to be done. So, you, you really need to pay attention. We met with the regulators a few weeks ago raising specific issues about this very, very narrow testing protocol that's going to be followed, and we didn't get anywhere. So, if the community is okay with that, fine. But there's a few of us who've been working on this for many, many years, advocating for the community, and at times, other people have to come and advocate for yourself. So, I strongly encourage you all to attend tomorrow night, 6:30 at the Holiday Inn.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members have any comments? All right, Butch, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, other distinguished participants at the dais. Uh, hopefully I can add a little bit of levity to the situation or make it a little more tolerable for everybody. This is the opportunity we have once a month, the second meeting, where we recognize those employees who are experiencing a milestone of employment with the city. Tonight, we're going to recognize Destiny Dunaway. Unfortunately, Destiny was here, but she had to go pick up her children, so she couldn't stay for the recognition, but we'll make sure that she has an opportunity to watch the video after the fact. Uh, Destiny was hired on September sixteenth, twenty twenty. She was hired as Utility Billing Specialist One in the Finance Department. On April second, twenty twenty-two, she was selected for advancement to the Utility Billing Specialist Two position. On June tenth of twenty twenty-four, Destiny was selected for promotion to the Technician Accounts, Accounts Payable position, a position which she currently, which she continues to hold and has become our custom. Uh, we always invite the supervisor up to say a few words about the employee, and we have Tarla Daniels here tonight to do that.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize Destiny. I've had the pleasure of working with Destiny for the five years that she's been with the city. I was actually on the committee that hired her when she started as, in utility billing, and I was her direct supervisor for four years when she was working in utility billing. That is until she abandoned me to take the accounts payable job that she currently has. Luckily, I still get to work closely with her and supervisor on some things. Destiny is a hardworking and dependable employee, and she has, is always striving to improve. She is helpful and encouraging to others, and she, and she is well-liked by the city and the finance department. Destiny, it's a pleasure to work with you, and I just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, because Destiny's here, you won't need to come out in front of the dais and take a picture with her.
Oh.
I know. She'll probably be disappointed as well.
Yeah, right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Butch. Amy, go right ahead.
Just since you said you were gonna force her to watch this, Butch, Destiny really appreciate your warmth every time that I walk into City Hall. It's always a pleasure to see you and just thank you for your service over the past five years. We're sending around a, a little note from city council, so we're, we're sorry that you, that we missed you tonight, but we really do appreciate your service, both in utility billing and finance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Let's move on to the city administrator. Uh, we have the review of the consent agenda, the agenda and the consent agenda, and I'd ask the city administrator to go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The consent agenda, item eight A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on September second. The general government meeting on September third, special meeting on August twenty-sixth, which was art committee, August twenty-seventh, water committee, and September second, an executive session. Eight B authorizes the city administrator to sign a new national opioid settlement participation form. Eight C authorizes the extension of bid thirty-three dash twenty-four, annual purchase of sodium chloride to Xylem, and an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars. Eight D awards bid sixty-six dash twenty-five professional services contract for the CLG grant, a certified local government grant, funded historic survey project with designing local LTD in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Eight E authorizes the purchase of, of police department ammunition from Salt Lake wholesale in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. Eight F is to approve traffic control schedule update number sixty-one. Eight G is to receive and file a monthly budget summary. And eight H is to receive and file cash disbursements.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any additional corrections, questions? Amy, go ahead.
Thank you. I do have questions on a couple. Um, on eight B, which is the National Opioid Settlement Participation Form, I understand that we don't have the expected amount yet. Is that correct?
If it was included, I, I didn't see it. I've reached out to our contact at the state to get the breakdown by jurisdiction.
Thank you. And I also understand that we have significantly more funding that we have received from the first settlement than was originally envisioned.
Multiple other pharmaceutical companies have come on, which has increased that amount, yes.
So I would just request that before additional funds are spent, that we have a vision committee meeting on this to think through what is the best way to spend these funds in furtherance of the intended goal of reducing opioid, opiate, and synthetic deaths in our community.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of others.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. Um, with regard to eight H, there's a line item for the Butler Snow Drinking Water Revolving Fund Bound, Bond Council of eighteen thousand. Could you remind us when that was approved by city council?
Yeah, I would have to double-check both our finance director and our water superintendent were out today. Um, I believe it was rolled into the approval for the loan funds, but I need to double-check that. I don't want to state that and not, not be correct.
Okay. If you could please, um, I guess, respond to let council know, obviously, anything over than, over sixty-five hundred needs prior-
Sure.
-authorization by council. Thank you. Um, and then my... Nope, I'm done. Oh, sorry, just a, I guess, a shout-out to Brandy and Lisa on the CLG grant for the historic survey project. Just really excited that this is one-hundred percent grant-funded and that we're able to retain and kind of explore more of that side of the, the history of our town. So shout-out to them.
Thank you, Amy. Anybody else? Nothing? Then I'd ask for a motion and to approve the agenda and the consent agenda, a motion and a second. We would like to try that.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda as written.
I'll second. Second by Jerry, thank you. Any discussion of that motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dunnehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you all. And so our city administrator sat there quietly for a very long period of time. I'm gonna invite him for his administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In the interest of time, I'm not gonna go through the full administrator report. I do want to call out that we, the city did receive an email from the Colorado Water Conservancy Board informing us that they're gonna be recommending us to move forward with a grant for five hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the feasibility study of the John Griffin Reservoir Feasibility Study. So that's a pretty big deal with some work that's been going forward with that particular project. Uh, we also received four proposals to operate the Royal Bridge Bridge. Selection committee met today. We're recommending moving forward with interviews of three of those, and I'll, I'll be sending out some more information about that here in the next day or so.
Okay, is that it? So the, the, the Griffin, what, what did we call that? The Griffin?
John Griffin.
John Griffin?
Park.
Park. Does anybody know what that is? Have an idea? That's a, you do? I see one head shaking. Great. Um, that's a park that's, they're going to design, the city needs more rest area for water because of things that come down the Arkansas. And what the Corps of Engineers has proposed, where the old sewer plant used to be off of Ash Street, when you walk back from Ash Street, there's a chunk of property back there that they would like to form a pond so that we would be able to store excess water for settlement. Uh, sometimes when we have fires up the river or a lot of mud, we don't have enough containment to hold that to let it settle so we can process it. So that's what that project's all about, and it looks like it's gonna go through, so...
At least from a feasibility standpoint.
Feasibility.
We'll be checking to see if that's a feasible project.
Yeah. It would be a nice pond. You could, you know, boat on it and probably fish in it as well, so... Amy, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, just on one of your updates in the economic development portion, um, with regard to the economic development manager exploring Main Street Mall Directory Sign Concepts and working with the PIO, um, could he please reach out to the Chamber, the Main Street Businesses, the Downtown Development Alliance? DDA?
Yeah.
As well as the Public Art Committee and just make sure that all of their thoughts are being taken into account at the earliest possible stage, um, so that it really reflects what they see as the, the needs on Main Street.
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Okay, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I'd just like to add on about the John Griffin Reservoir Feasibility Project. There's actually a, a very good reason why to pursue something like this. Other, the, the settling issue is a good issue all by itself. There are recreation benefits to having a reservoir there, but the primary, uh, the primary benefit of a reservoir like that is you can have, as a city, really good water rights, which we do, we have really good water rights, but if there's no water in the river, we're, we have no rights to exercise. And so this gives us a way to store that water, hopefully so that perhaps someday in time of need that we will have an additional source of water that we can call on for the residents. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John. Let's move on to ten A. It's authorized the city administrator to sign a professional service agreement with Port Architecture and Urbanization for Master Planning of the Western Gateway Park and redevelopment of the Park, Parks Office at Centennial Park in an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Would you like to... Yes, Patrick, is that you? Patrick?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have Patrick give a presentation. Normally, this would be part of the consent agenda, but because this is a big project, uh, we wanted to do a short presentation on-
Great, let's do it.
-the selection.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If I can have my PowerPoint pulled up. There we go. So I apologize that this seems like old information to council. We do have a large crowd here this evening. We've also potentially had people watching the live stream for this, so I thought it'd be a good idea to give some background about what this project is and hopefully instill some good vibes in the, the room. Uh, so we are here to talk about Western Gateway Park, or what we're calling Western Gateway Park, and a master plan for that project, as well as a reuse of the park offices at Centennial Park now that they have moved to their new location over on Elm. So the site was originally the location of a coal-fired power plant originally built in eighteen ninety-seven by the Southern Colorado Power Company. It sits alongside the Arkansas River, and it's approximately twenty-two acres in area. Uh, after several mergers and acquisitions later, it became owned by Black Hills Energy. Uh, Black Hills Energy was the owner of the plant and the land. This plant was decommissioned in the early two thousand teens and then finally demolished in twenty fourteen. And when it was demolished, there was a lot of interest as to what could potentially happen with this property in the future now that that power plant is gone. At the ti- at the time of the demolition, and consequently thereafter, Black Hills Energy approached the city about potentially acquiring the parcel. The city wished for assurances that the site had been environmentally remediated to a point where it was safe from a risk standpoint for the city to actually take ownership of the land. This process took nearly a decade to complete to the city's satisfaction. Now, a couple of interesting things happened in twenty twenty-four with respect to this property. One was that we acquired a grant from the state of Colorado that was going to not only help with acquisition of the property, but also master planning for future uses associated with this property. The other was that based upon old historical records for the property, we had to do a plat that actually created accurate boundaries as part of a deed for what was gonna be conveyed under the sale of the property. In event, it took Black Hills Energy, or I'm sorry, the Public Utilities Commission quite some time to grant Black Hills Energy permission to actually divest themselves of the property for the city to acquire it. However, we did acquire it in June of this year. Now, when we knew that we had a closing date in mind at that point, we published a request for proposals, an RFP, for a master plan of the Black Hills Energy parcel, which we have begun referring to as the Western Gateway parcel, for a master plan purpose. Now... During the decade of the two thousand teens, the city undertook a study of the Arkansas River Corridor with a particular focus on how to program the Western Gateway property, a placeholder name we, we've now given to the Black Hills Energy property. The study established a conceptual plan for the Black Hills Energy property. This twenty seventeen plan has not really been reexamined since it was adopted with that Arkansas River Corridor master plan, which means it's now about eight years old, and we don't know if some of the assumptions that went into that plan are still valid, that the public still agrees with them, if there are perhaps new things that they would like to see. So it's worth noting that we've done this plan previously and perhaps using it as a resource to inform what the master planning of this property is gonna look like, but it isn't necessarily a guarantee that it's going to resemble that plan that you see on the, the wall there. That was, uh, that was a previous twenty seventeen study. Now, at around the same time, in twenty nineteen, the city also created riverfront zoning in response to a particular recommendation of the Arkansas River Corridor master plan. This plan called for the creation of a riverwalk that would begin with the Western Gateway property and align along the river as it progressed through Kansas City. And I should mention that at this point in time, the site does still retain an I industrial zoning associated with it, which I'm guessing, based upon what recommendations we get from this master planning process, that zoning will probably come before you as a matter of a zone change.
Patrick, did Amy, did you have a question?
Oh, I, I just wanted to thank WKRP. I think that they provided a lot of the support or the writing that went into the grant that funded that twenty seventeen master planning study effort. Um, and just to say that, you know, we recognize and appreciate their support on that and that that effort was not in vain, that it, um, is kind of the, the baseline or the ground floor for the effort that's forthcoming. Thanks.
Correct, correct.
So during the decade of the twenty, oh, I'm sorry, I just read that. Earlier this year, the city Parks Department vacated offices located in Centennial Park. These offices were very undersized for the storage of maintenance equipment and office space, and as a result of this location, the existing buildings formerly used by the Parks Department need to be either repurposed or replaced. This leaves a vacancy in the park very close to the river, and its location is only about eight hundred feet east of the Western Gateway property boundary. Now, note that both the redevelopment of this site and the master planning of the Western Gateway property are highly recommended projects associated with the twenty twenty-one master plan, the comprehensive plan that the city adopted. Now, with respect to these projects, as I said in mid-June, the city published a request for proposals specifically seeking design professionals to help the city with creating a master plan for both the Western Gateway property and determining a best-fit reuse of the old Parks Department offices at Centennial Park. Publication period, and we published this in the, towards the beginning of June, knowing that we had a closing date happening during the month of June. Um, and that was accompanied by a question-and-answer session with staff and a site walkthrough on June thirtieth of the property. The RFP formally closed on July thirty-first of this year. Now, we received ten proposals associated with this. If you know anything about when you receive a design proposal, uh, what comes in is usually an average of about fifty pages in length, so do the math. That's a lot of reading. I wasn't going to do this alone. Not only would it have been inappropriate for me to do this alone, I, I also, I also wanted to spread some of the work around. So we had a committee that was comprised of myself, city manager, or city administrator Ryan Stevens, public works director Leo Evans, our economic development manager Rick Harmon, our parks director Rex Brady, two members of planning commission, Ashley Smith and Bob Wellitt, and two members of council, councilmember Schmisher and Worthington. Uh, and I will let, since they're here this evening and can speak for themselves, city administrator Stevens and councilmembers Worthington and Schmisher wax poetic about how much fun all of that reading was. So our job was to narrow that list down. Ten proposals is an awful lot, and we couldn't possibly interview all ten applicants, all ten proposals. So we wanted to narrow that down to the three or four that we felt, we felt best met or understood what the city was looking for in the RFP. We did narrow that down, and we did, in fact, have interviews that happened the week of the twenty-fifth of August. So from that list, oops. The four interviews that we had, the finalist firms, were then narrowed down to the two that we felt were most strongly representative of what we were wanting to see come out of this project. Their public outreach was something that we felt was very important in association with this, and we also checked their references that they had provided to us. And based upon responses that we got to some additional follow-up questions post-interview, we've concluded that the firm that, that we would like to go with is Port Architecture and Urbanism- and Urbanism. Now, although they do have offices in, um, both Chicago and Philadelphia, their staff is a bit decentralized, so they do have local representation here in Colorado. We also have from the team they put together for engineers, some local representation as well, some natives to Canyon City who are part of that, uh, that design and engineering team. Now, presented to council this evening, we have the professional services agreement between the city and port. If council authorizes the city administrator to sign this agreement tonight, we will hopefully begin this project before the end of September, and we anticipate that it will be about a year in process and should finish somewhere in July of 2026. This will give us a set of plans that we can then, uh, pending, uh, budget allocation from council, refine to civil construction documents, and eventually go under construction with the, uh, the master plan that, uh, the public has given us input. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Patrick. Is it Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Chapman. Um, thanks so much, Planner Mulready. I always feel odd using that title, but, um, really appreciate your work. It's obviously difficult to wrangle such a large selection committee and with so many, um, disparate proposals that really came in all over the place, so just, um, thank you for your flexibility and your leadership throughout the process. Um, I think what is particularly important for me with this project is to ensure that the, you know, there is a plan to have a monthly small group steering committee meet, um, and that will really be the through thread on this project to, to make sure that all of the various interest groups that have a stake in that piece of property have a voice and have a seat at the table, in addition to, you know, I think there are supposed to be four public meetings and then four different stakeholder groups.
Yes.
Um, so I, like, I want to see a list of who the city is planning to invite to be on that steering committee, because I want to ensure that it really does represent all of those different interests from oil creek ditch to Aroa to...
We, we can certainly do that. Um, what I'm thinking is depending upon what will be on the agenda for any one of those meetings, it may be scalable to, you know, people who...
I guess I'd rather that people themselves have the opportunity to opt out, so maybe have an agenda that's detailed enough for them to be able to say, eh, this one, I do not need to waste an hour of my time because I don't see, uh, an interest for my stakeholder group there, but I just wanna make sure that we are being as transparent and communicative with all of the interested parties as, as possible.
Absolutely, and I believe you had also offered to send me the names of some, some stakeholders so that I could add them to the list.
I got, um, the names and email addresses from Mr. Ninus this morning for some of the, the rafting, um, community stakeholders that should be included, so I will send, um, that your way, uh, this evening.
Great.
I think at this time, Amy, that we would, uh, the quickest way to get it into is either a general government or revision committee meeting. Do we have to have it a regu- a regular city council meeting?
No, I, I don't think that there needs to be a formal motion. I just wanna make sure that we have transparency. So I don't have any issues with, um, making a motion to approve this this evening, um, after any other council members may have questions or comments, but I do wanna make sure that I have a commitment from staff to get that list of steering committee stakeholders this week. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I just wanted to keep that moving, so instead of waiting another month for it again, so...
100%.
Okay, thank you. Uh, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, uh, my question is, um, is, will there be a public process to, um, choose a final name for the, for the project? Are, are we set on Western Gateway Plaza?
No, I, we're not set on that name at all. I think it's, as Patrick mentioned, that's just a placeholder, so I think a- as we go through this process, um, yeah, I, I think there will be opportunities to, to name the park.
Okay, thank you all. Any other comments or questions of council? Then, none? Amy, would you like to make a, a motion?
I would be happy to.
Whoops. Jerry?
No, go ahead, Amy.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
You wanna flip a coin, or?
No, it's all right. I was gonna make the motion to move things along for you.
Go right, go right in.
Um, I moved to authorize the city administrator to sign the professional services agreement with Port Architecture for the Western Gateway Park master plan and the Centennial Park office redevelopment in an amount not to exceed $372,628.
Second.
Made in second? Any discussion on that motion? You gotta be quick. Done? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammer?
Okay. Let's go on to, uh, discussion question B. It's a second reading adoption by title only of ordinance 12, series 2025, entitled An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Chapter 9.52 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Firearms and to Particularly Opt Out of SB 24-31. Uh, any comments from council or Ryan, or?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as, as you indicated, this is a second reading. At first reading, there were two versions of the ordinance before city council. Uh, what city council, uh, instructed us to move forward with was an ordinance that prohibited open carry, uh, in city buildings or city meetings, uh, and then allowed for concealed carry. And then we also had a provision in there that behind the secure area of, of those city buildings, that, that would also not, uh, be allowed for any firearms. Attorney Huffman, is there anything else that you'd add to that?
The only thing I would add is that the revisions that were, um, included in the, uh, motion approving the ordinance on first reading are included within the version in your packet.
And the last, last thing I would add is I have not received any public comments regarding this ordinance.
Okay.
Chief Schick, have you received any public comment?
No, sir.
That's a no from the chief.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here last, two weeks ago, I had a, a sick, my son was ill, so, and I was not here, and I really, this is something that is very important to me, so if I could take the floor and step off the dais for a minute and step down for a minute? Thank you. I'm gonna talk right here for just a minute. Whoops, there we go. And I'm talking to all my constituents as well. 233 years ago, James Madison was the one who originally drafted our Second Amendment. Lots of things have changed on that, but the whole constant, you know, in our Second Amendment, but the main part of that has not changed. We're living in a time now where lots of things are happening, people are, some people are blaming guns, some people are blaming this and that. It's not the bottom line when anybody commits a crime. It's the person. It has nothing to do with whatever they're carrying or anything. It is the person, period. But we put a deal that I was not here for, and now it's on second reading, and I, I wanted to say that, you, we're saying that you have to now have a concealed carry instead of an open carry. That almost makes us have two different classes of citizens right here, right here in our county, because we have those who can afford it, and they can walk in here and say, yeah, I'm packing. It's concealed, and we have those who can't. But I wanna show a quick demonstration for a minute, and this is for everybody. And I will say that this is a toy. So before anything goes on, chief, I have a toy. So right now, I would be considered concealed carry. Anybody see it? Can you guys see it now? Can you see this? Well, you gotta stand up. Can you see us? Yeah, that's right. Can you guys see this? Can you see it now? This is absolutely ludicrous that we are trying to change something and make two different measures on this instead of just making it an open carry and concealed carry both within this county. I was, I've done a lot of research on this lately, but the main thing is I went and even talked with our three county commissioners. I talked with them all individually, and they thought the reason they did this is because we're one of the few counties left in Colorado that is still believes in the Second Amendment and a lot of other free amendments that, to help our country. But I think this is absolutely crazy that we separate this, because there are people, it's $160 in our county to get a concealed weapons permit. Now, it isn't like that all over the state. People all over the state, the counties get to charge what they want. CBI, I think, believe, charges 50. Then the counties do whatever after that. But this is ridiculous to charge somebody to say, I have a weapon. And I am gonna say this, what does CBI look for? They do a background check to make sure there was been no firearms, they do a fingerprint. Do they do anything else other than that? No. It's a moneymaker for our state, to be honest with you, because there's a lot of places that don't require it. So what I would like to do tonight, and I'm gonna step back up on the dais with my toy And I, and I have to say, I do agree with everything in the, in the readings that we have except for one. This should be firearms, period, open and concealed. Do I believe they need to go into where the employees are? No. That's behind glass anyway. But I do not think that we need to make our citizens feel first class, second class, for those who can afford this. This is an American constitution in our Second Amendment. There's all kinds of other amendments I could quote right now, and I'll bet you half the people in here, no offense, and half the people on this dais who would go, which one's that? What's that one? But everybody knows the Second Amendment, everybody knows the First Amendment. So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we include open carry and concealed carry together in our reading here that just went, and not distinguish between the two.
How, uh, we already have a second reading, so we'd like to change that, or?
Well, I'll, I'll be honest, um, when this came up on the, on the agenda a while back, it, it passed on first reading to have both open and concealed, and it passed five to two. Then the next reading came, and all of a sudden, all of a sudden, it went three to three. Yeah, it was five to two when it first passed. It passed the first reading, no problem. But even if it was four to three, it passed. Then we went, and somebody was absent, I believe, and it went three to three, we went to a tie, and then it dropped. Now we're coming back again, but I'm gonna say, I just demonstrated, what's the difference? If I lift up my jacket, I'm open carry. If I put my jacket over, it's concealed. But I'm gonna say this, and, and we're gonna hear this tonight. People are gonna say, well, people feel uncomfortable. Well, if somebody walks in this room and they turn and somebody sees that gun in there, is that gonna make them extremely uncomfortable? Is it gonna make me up here on the dais uncomfortable? No, it is not the guns that are the problem, and that is what we really need to take in account here.
Can I, can I ask you a question? I, I'm just being a little sarcastic here, maybe just a little funny.
No problem.
But, um, I, I agree with why we, how we have the ordinance written, and it's for other reasons, because we do have to be cognizant of other people's feelings towards guns, dogs, snakes, whatever. So let me ask you, why did you have to make it a point to tell everyone it was a fake gun in your pocket?
One, because, did you, the reason I did not wanna, because I do not have a concealed carry permit. That is why. So otherwise, I would have been breaking the law. But I have taken the concealed class, and I'm gonna tell you this, for those of you who think the concealed class teaches you a lot, it absolutely doesn't. It is an abs- I learned 10 times more in my hunter education back in 1975. The concealed carry in this, if you, if anybody's taken the course, and, and I didn't, and I'll be honest, I did not go get my concealed because I have to pay $160 to carry a gun? That's ludicrous. I'm sorry. And I think that we, and I've said this before, I agree with our county commissioners, I think they got it right, and I think that we should just match what they did and make it real simple for the citizens of Canyon City as well as the citizens of Fremont County, because if somebody goes down by chance to the county building, they can be carrying, but all of a sudden, they come here and they can't be carrying. This is crazy. We're one small community.
I agree, by the way, but Emily?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Could you, I, I was going to make a motion to approve ordinance number 12 on second reading, but I'm unclear as to whether there's already a motion and second on the floor.
We, we have a motion, so I believe that's not in order yet. The, the, what should happen, I believe, is that the, um, we asked for a second on this motion, uh, if there's a second, have a discussion and a vote, and then if this passes or fails, if it fails, then, uh, council member, uh, Tracy's motion would be in order, I believe, but if it, if it passes, then it's a moot point.
The reason, if, if we're considering Tim's motion, could we just get some clearer wording about what he's proposing that's different from what we have in front of us? Thanks.
Yes, the only thing that I am proposing that is different is that we allow open carry as well as concealed carry. Other than that, there is no difference.
So where, where would the words be changed, then? I need to know which line is you're changing.
I, I have a suggestion. Um, the, what, what my suggestion would be is that under, uh, 9.52.010, that it read, um, firearms are hereby permitted in, and then, does that take care of it?
Mayor and council, the difficulty I have is that we had two versions two weeks ago that they were entirely different ordinances, one that addressed open carry, one that addressed concealed carry. Council approved the version, um, related to conceal. So if council is inclined to reconsider that, um, I'm not able to make all the changes tonight because they were completely different ordinances. Um, you know, if, if there is direction to redo it and bring back the conceal, the open carry, we can certainly do so. Frankly, I think the easiest way to do this is for, um, Councilman Dennehy to withdraw his motion and to have council vote on the original ordinance as presented. If it is rejected, we can bring back the ordinance that, um, Councilman Dennehy is talking about that would apply to both open and concealed carry. Um, or council can continue it once again, and we can have two versions in place, one on second reading that is the same one you have tonight, and another one on first reading that ha- includes open carry and has the same limitations related to the, behind the glass, um, that the concealed carry version has tonight. Um, so, you know, it depends whether you wanna do an up and down vote tonight on the conceal only, or simply continue that tonight and have two versions at the next meeting.
Can, can I ask you just a quick question? When this was addressed and we, we hit this point last time, it was just a quick, exactly what I did, just right there, and it was turned down. It was on second reading, and, and it, and it did pass on first reading, as I had just said.
What I'm talking about is at the last meeting, two weeks ago, there were two separate versions of the ordinance for council to consider, and they had different language altogether. So it would not be doing you justice to go and amend when we had completely different versions of the ordinance, and so we, I wanna get it right, and...
No, and, and I get that. I, I wanna get it right too, and again, you know, I, I apologize to, to all my constituents that I was not able to be here, but this is something that I think we need to get right, especially in this community, and, uh, and I think we had it right before when we passed it, you know, a while back on first reading. I think we had it right. I think we had it right. And that's all I'm trying to say is, let's try to bring this like to match our county. Let's try to do this right, to make it easy on our citizens. We're not a monster city. We're a small, we're a small county, but let's make this right for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Andrea and then Justin, okay? Andrea?
I just, I was wondering why we should call the question. We should call the question, and then if it's voted down, then we can vote on whether to go, to go ahead with Tim's suggestion. But we have, we have something to vote on, that's on, that's on the agenda. We should vote, you know, yea or nay, and then move on.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
Justin Scott, 3080 Central Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak to you again on this I appreciate that you are on the cusp of passing something less egregious than the idiocy of the legislature. However, I concur completely with Councilman Dennehy that it needs to be a completely open, honest addressing of the Second Amendment and the Colorado Constitution, something our courts will not do, but this city can do, and acknowledge the right as it exists. Overwhelmingly, in hearing after hearing, the citizens of this community who cared enough to show up, supported open and concealed carry without restriction. If you are our representatives, I realize not everyone in the community thinks that way, but the people who cared the most, who showed up, want us to follow our founders' vision. We've had a rough meeting tonight. It's been said already, but Councilman Tracy had the right to post what she posted, and we have the right to be outraged about it, and to say that we're outraged. That's how free speech works. It's not getting to hear what we want all the time, it's getting, for everyone getting to speak. When it comes to firearms, some people don't want to see them. Other people would like to see them. If I might point out, what Congressman, or Councilman Dennehy presented was, you know, a very small difference, whether or not his jacket was down. But as we contemplate carrying firearms, if someone carries a firearm concealed with a concealed carry permit, and nothing bad happens, no one ever knows. If someone carries concealed without a concealed carry permit, and nothing bad happens, no one ever knows. If something bad happens in either of those situations, if someone has committed a crime, they may be prosecuted. If someone carries openly, everyone who is observant can know. But still, if nothing bad happens, nothing bad happens. If something bad happens and they have committed a crime, they can be prosecuted. The only difference is our public awareness, the public exercise of our right. We have a public right to speak even when what we say is distasteful to others. We have a public right to carry firearms even if it's distasteful to others. Please, go back and do what you were originally going to do. But as a possible solution for you tonight, you could go ahead and withdraw your motion, Tim, pass this version, and immediately go back and start the process to do what you should have done in the beginning. Thank you.
Emily, you had your hand up, I believe? Is that still up?
Yes, if I'm understanding correctly, we don't yet have the motion on the floor for discussion that we need to have. So I would like to move for approval of ordinance number 12, series of 2025, on second reading.
No, we have a motion, it has not been seconded, the chair has not called for the second yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there some gentleman, would you like to, got it?
Hello, greetings, Council. Love and blessings to each and every one of you guys, and I know you guys put yourself up here in public service, and sometimes you get heat, and it's not always great. I will say, I know the mayor was getting some heat, and I will say, I feel like he does side with us on Second Amendment issues, and I've always appreciated that and see it as the most important, because without the Second Amendment, our friends here wouldn't be able to have our First Amendment right at all. And I will say absolute prayers for Ms. Tracy's husband. I don't think he should be brought into this or anything, and we absolutely care for you and your husband. I think just people felt attacked with everything going on. So we do care for you guys. So this is just a really important issue. All infringements grow on themselves. I had one of the councilmen here say that, "Well, this isn't a big deal, because in polling places, you're not supposed to have open carry, so you don't intimidate those who poll." Well, nobody here voted for this. The people here are not saying, you know, one infringement grows upon itself. So it starts off with a polling place, then it's a government building, and it just continues on and on and on. Our founding fathers taught us about that, that every time we allow, and it's same with freedom of speech, every time we say, "Well, that person can be censored for this," or "That person can be censored for that." It's same with firearms. "Oh, you can't have it in the park, now you can't have it in your car, now you can't have it here." It always grows upon itself, and it continues. It's like a virus. And so we see that happen. So it is completely unconstitutional, everybody knows that. We've all sworn an oath to the Constitution. It's pretty dang plain and simple. It's the one that the founding fathers put a triple exclamation point on by saying, "It shall not be infringed." There's no more level of clearness that anything can have. No other, none of our other Bill of Rights said, "Shall not be infringed." There's no other Bill of Rights. It's the one thing to not touch at all. You know, if anything, it's plain and simple. The Council decided that because some of the council members are not comfortable with the sight of guns, they're going to allow people not to have the right to bear arms in their presence. And then what's next? If someone's not accountable with freedom of speech, that right is not allowed in their presence also? It is different, it would be different if there's no cost to a concealed license. In that case, then I wouldn't care as much, because we could all be concealed legally. I understand that some of us don't care, and criminals definitely don't care, but some of us just conceal anyway. Some of us conceal. I have a concealed license. I know many people who will not get a concealed carry license because they do not want to be forced to pay for it, and they do not want to be put on a government. I asked for about 30 seconds to finish. They do not want to be forced to pay for it, they do not want to be put on a government database, which can very much be used for bad first registration and then confiscation. That's how every previous government has worked in history, as we study history. Once you have registration, you have confiscation. I know people whom will not get a concealed permit for this reason. The entire point of the Constitution is to limit the power to government and to protect the right of the people, not the other way around. It is good to remove everyone from the city council that does not follow the U.S. Constitution, and replace them with people who do follow the U.S. Constitution, including the right to bear arms and that shall not be infringed. I am complete support that anyone whom endorses or supports assassinations, murders of an American, no matter their political views, should resign from office. And I do, I have love and blessings for every different, every different political viewpoint. And so I think we all care for you and care for your husband, but it is not right to, you know, support that. And I understand that you are sorry, I thank you for saying that you are sorry.
Thank you. Emily, you had your hand up again?
Yeah, I, since we're going to continue discussion at this point, I think it's perhaps important with the discussion about the Constitution and so forth and Second Amendment, I think it's important to once again provide the context within which we're even considering this issue. And that is because the U.S. Supreme Court made a finding in a case, I think several years ago, and then the state legislature about a year ago or so passed a law to come into compliance with what the U.S. Supreme Court said about the Second Amendment, and where we could and could not, as a municipality, regulate firearms. So we knew that we needed to make changes, which we have already made with a previous ordinance. We knew we needed to make changes in our current ordinance in regard to whether firearms could be carried in parks and on trails. What the Supreme Court and the state legislature following it did, as I recall, without having the language in front of me, is they said that there were certain, there's like four categories of what they call sensitive places, that the city could decide what we wanted to do. We certainly, I think, I hope, we have a pretty unanimous view that courtrooms should be a place that we just say, "No weapons." And in fact, as I understand it, there is a metal detector at the, before anyone can go into municipal work, just as there is in other courts around the state. So we knew we had to make, we had to make the change that we already did in regard to parks and trails. We've had quite a lot of discussion about how we want to approach other possible sensitive places. And frankly, I think the ordinance that we have in front of us, the wording that we worked on two weeks ago, when the ordinance was on first reading, I think it's really quite a good ordinance. It's not restricting concealed carry, other than, as it spells out in the language, in terms of, I'm looking for the right line here, "Portion of building used for corporate meetings or in any space not open to the public, in any building in which the official office of any elected member of the city council or city administrator is located." So I think, as already said, we're saying, you know, we, we don't want people taking firearms behind the restricted area in the municipal building. And we're also saying that we're not trying to prohibit concealed carry in council chambers or just about anywhere else, for a variety of reasons. And, you know, one of those reasons is, we're not gonna have a guard, we're not gonna have a metal detector. But we've had lots of previous discussion about the pros and cons of allowing open carry in council chambers. So I would just like us to be sure we understand where we've been on this. We've had a lot of good discussions, not only on council, but a lot of good community input on this issue. That's all.
Thank you. Where are we at?
You currently have a motion on the floor, sir.
From?
From Tim.
From Tim.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, the, what I'm going to do is second Tim's motion, so that we can have a discussion. What I think should happen is that we should vote no on Tim's motion, so that we can allow our attorney time to bring back the full permission for carry within, within our council chambers. I think then that we take up a motion by Councilmember Tracy, and I would urge a no vote on that, which would be a vote on this, on this exact language we have in front of us, so that we can instruct our attorney to bring the full Second Amendment permission in our council chambers back to us for further consideration. Yes?
May I ask a question on that? Just for clarification, I could look at our packet tonight, but my recollection is that those of us who were at the first meeting in September, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe we voted unanimously in favor of ordinance number 12, as we made changes to it at that first meeting in September. Is that correct?
No, we had the one that just didn't make any distinction, that I understood is to match the county, and then that got all bollixed up the second time it came around, and I didn't agree with that, so.
What I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is we voted on ordinance 12 at the first meeting in September, and that vote was unanimous aye. I just want to be clear for Council and for the public, that this ordinance, as it is currently worded and as was in tonight's packet, was passed unanimously by the six council members who were here at that meeting at the beginning of September.
I don't remember it that way, it was, it was, it mimicked.
It's in the minutes. It's in the minute, unless the minutes are wrong.
It doesn't matter, because we have the matter in front of us.
Okay, we have the matter in front of us, so, Amy?
Thanks. This, I don't know if this is legal, so I defer to the attorney to tell me that it's not, but it occurs to me that it might be simpler to just see if Tim would be willing to make a motion to continue this to the next council meeting with the direction that the city attorney bring back a second, a second option, rather than having a whole bunch of votes that then get everything all messed up again.
Right. Yeah, I think, consistent with what I said a little bit earlier, that is one very easy way to do this, is to continue tonight's, to continue consideration of the ordinance that is currently on for second reading. So not take action on it at all.
So it would come back next.
And also, at the next meeting, bring back the version that it applies to both open and concealed, but has the same limitations that you voted on last meeting, related to behind the glass. And then you will have both ordinances on the agenda, one on second reading, but one on first reading. You'll have them both in front of you, and I think you'll be able to make a more informed decision. The public will be able to see the full text of both ordinances. And so if Councilmember Dennehy withdraws the motion, and...
Do I need to withdraw that, or do I just make a motion to move both motions to the next city council meeting?
Again, what I would do, just for, and it has nothing to do with...
No, I understand.
...policy. It is all about making sure that Council has the right ordinance in front of them...
Gotcha.
...to approve what it desires.
Okay.
Is to withdraw the motion you made, and move to continue the ordinance that's on tonight for first, or for second reading, and whether it's part of the same motion or a separate motion, also direct me to bring back the ordinance that, on first reading, that authorizes open and concealed with the same limitations that are in the ordinance tonight on second reading, so Council will have both of them in front of them.
Okay. No, I can do that. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my motion, but I would like to make the motion that we move...
Continue?
Continue the motion on second reading.
Of ordinance number 12.
Of ordinance number 12 to the next council meeting, and to move my...
And direct me to draft.
And direct me to draft to the next meeting as well. Thank you.
So if, if Council votes in favor of the motion, it would do two things. It would cause second reading on ordinance number 12 to occur at the first meeting in October, and you would have first reading on the ordinance that would allow open and concealed with the same limitations that are currently in ordinance number 12. So what is, what Councilmember Dennehy is hoping to accomplish would be in front of you in writing on first reading, and so you would have both of them at that point.
That was a motion I'll second.
The second, made in second, and we've had discussion on it. Any more discussion?
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tim Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Steine?
Abstain.
I'm going to just briefly say, before I give my vote, that you can look on page 13 in tonight's packet and see the vote at the last council meeting. We had six council members present, all voted aye on ordinance 12. Councilmember Dennehy was not... Councilmember Dennehy was not present. I just want to be sure people recognize how confusing this could be to the community. And with that, I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Uh.
Councilmember Tracy, how did you vote?
It's on the screen, she says no.
I said, I said with that, I'm going to vote no. I hope you can hear me.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
You're so far away that I, I'm so sorry. Oh my gosh, um, who thunk it? Is it Mr. Miller? What's your first name?
Perry.
Perry?
Perry Miller, yes.
Okay, Perry Miller, go ahead.
So, I mean, when you look at cities like Chicago.
Hold it, would you just hold?
I think the, I think the record should reflect the motion carried.
Motion carried.
Okay, four to two, I believe.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Thank you, now Perry.
I just want to make sure that the minutes reflect the motion carried.
If I may, Mr. Attorney, actually, it carried four to one with one abstention.
In this context, an abstention is a no, but yes, I understand.
We're, I'm trying to get to you, Perry, so you, go right ahead, Perry.
I just don't want my little town, I haven't lived here that long, but I love Colorado. I've been here since 2000. I've lived in this town since 2020, and I don't want my little town to be like Chicago or any other city that doesn't allow guns, that doesn't allow open carry. You look at the crime there.
Mm-hmm.
You want the crime here to be like there?
You don't believe in open carry? Who's on the back wall? Who's on the back wall?
Just to be clear, we were just talking about this room on that last conversation, not, not the city, just this room.
Okay.
Are you more comfortable?
What?
Are you more comfortable with someone? Okay, I, I walk anywhere, I go anywhere, and I see someone open carry, I immediately feel comfortable.
Yeah, the ordinance doesn't cover, it's just in this room. That's the only debate that really is going on right now. All the rest, you can carry in whatever you want.
Right.
So, you know, it's only in this room that that's where I have a disagreement, and where some of us have disagreements. Okay? That's it. No, we're not restricting anybody open wherever.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand. It starts in this room, and then it goes to the street, and then it goes to that street, and then it goes to that park. Now, my friend back there, she's a widow, she takes her dog to the park, she walks her dog in the park, and she don't want to be restricted in the park, okay? Because she carries because she feels safe, okay? She gotta, she gotta have that safety.
But then.
Now, do you want to keep her from that?
There's no restriction for that.
Not yet.
It was.
Not yet, it starts here.
It was.
It starts here.
It was, it was, and we lifted it. We got rid of it.
Okay. So let's not, let's not go there.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right.
Okay. Let's move on to 10C. It's, uh, 10C is introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance 14, series 2025, excise tax ordinance implementation. We would have a discussion or an invite to city administrator.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're talking about ordinance 14. As you know, the city and the Recreation District have partnered on bringing a public year-round pool back to the community. Last year, the voters approved a city ballot issue to add a 0.3% sales tax for the construction of the pool, and they approved the Recreation District to take out approximately $24 million in debt to build the pool. However, the mill levy to fund operations was voted down. There was a lot of feedback after last year's election, and the voters asked for other means to be considered to fund this project that were not property taxes or sales tax on general goods. The city and Recreation District stakeholders worked to come up with alternative methods to fund operations. Other forms of funding were explored, including grants. Unfortunately, grants don't typically fund operations, because the granters want to see sustainability. In early June, the city started pursuing the idea of an excise tax on tourist-related activities, and on July 23rd presented the idea in a joint session between the city and the Recreation District. On July 18th, the city council approved ballot language to ask the voters to decide on the question that would ask voters to impose a 2.25% excise tax on ticket sales, fares, and fees for amusement or scenic rides, attractions, and recreational excursions. An excise tax works like a sales tax, but it's only applied to the defined categories. It is not a property tax or a sales tax on general goods. It would only apply to those who are purchasing tickets or fares within those defined categories. The second part of this process, which we're here tonight, is to have an implementation ordinance that goes along with the ballot language. Ordinance 14 was discussed at the September 13th general government meeting. At that meeting, there was direction to add more definition to the ordinance. In this version, you will see definitions for attraction, operate, and point of interest. This ordinance provides those definitions and the mechanics of how this tax will work, assuming that the ballot measure is passed at the November election by the Canyon City voters. It provides definition of various terms, including amusement rides, attraction, person, recreation excursion, and scenic rides. The ordinance also outlines who is responsible for excise tax collection and includes provisions for audits, similar to what would be required for sales tax collectors. The ordinance also outlines how the funds shall be used, with the primary purpose of the funds going towards pool operations via an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Recreation District. Any excess revenue that would not go to the pool operation shall be deposited into a new capital reserve account for the city for future community amenities. For example, the future buildout of the former Black Hills Clark Station property as described earlier tonight. And finally, the ballot language ordinance is written in a way that will include the Royal Gorge Bridge activities if it were annexed into the city. The city is currently having discussions regarding a path to annexation. Additionally, council could direct the city attorney to explore adding a companion 2.25% fee on the Royal Gorge Bridge and Park while annexation is being explored.
Thank you. Ryan, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you. The, um, Mr. Mayor, I did go on the, the city website, and what I'm talking about is, is kind of the rules of the road here for this evening. Did go on the city website and looked at the rules regarding citizen participation in meetings of city council. In there, it says that citizens are limited to five minutes rather than three minutes. I, if I remember correctly, the, the council voted on a three-minute limit, and the, in addition, in the rules, it says that no citizen requesting to speak shall be allowed to address the meeting in the second time unless specifically allowed by the chair. And I would, I would request, and if we need to, I could make this a motion, that we allow five minutes and pull the restriction on people who wish to address us more than once.
Who sets the timer? I, I didn't realize that it was been three minutes forever that I knew of, so. Is that, we have a whole bunch of people that want to talk. How long you want to be here tonight?
I'm good at three.
We're looking.
I could do it in two. I could do it in two.
I like this lady here. What's your name?
But can anybody do it in one first?
I will try my best. I'm Stacy Klein, I'm here representing the Museum of Colorado Prisons. Um, I understand that museums are now part of the excise tax possibly. We are a 501(c)(3), and I'm opting in. I believe in community. I think that if we all work together, that this can happen. It's going to be 33 cents on my $15 ticket. I don't think anybody's going to walk out my door saying, "That's it, 33 cents, I'm not doing it." We also have raised our prices twice in the last five years. It still hasn't hurt our business. But when the bridge is hurting, the museum hurts. When the train hurts, we hurt. We kind of piggyback off of everybody. But yeah, I want to be the first attraction here in Canyon City that opts in. We opt in.
Thank you.
Is that okay, Brandon?
Thank you, Stacy.
So, less than two.
Thank you.
Denise didn't even start the timer on you, Ms. Klein.
I don't know. I, I got the senior discount, so it was 12 bucks for me. And then, so.
Amy?
Thank you. Um, I would like to make a motion, not on the ordinance, but I'd like to make a motion that we ask the city attorney to bring to our October 6th meeting a draft ordinance imposing a community amenity charge on the Royal Gorge Bridge that matches, or whatever you need to call it to make it legal, that matches the 2.25% of the excise tax.
Thank you. That's second.
Okay, I, I think what you want me to do is research whether we can do that, and if we can, to bring that ordinance back.
Research whether or not we can do it, and if we can, then please, but please already draft the ordinance, if it is legal, to do so after the research, and have it for us for consideration at the October 6th meeting. Given that it is a, given that it is a ordinance that has a financial consequence, I understand that it would then need to first be on this Wednesday night's meeting, is that right?
It does not have a penalty provision.
Okay, so we are okay not have, okay. Because I want to make sure that this is, if, if council agrees, and if it's legal, that this is passed before the election. I want people to fully understand that the city is committed to, to the bridge, playing by the same rules of the road as everybody else, which is why I really do want to see it on October 6th, if it's legal. Thanks.
If it is legal and possible to get it done that quickly, this is frankly, a very, very unique type of fee, unheard of. So I, I guess we will do our best, but this is a.
So if it is not possible, then at a bare minimum, I'd like to see a draft resolution that all of council can say, "We are committed to this" while we figure out the, the legalities behind the ordinance.
Okay.
I just, I want something that is in writing, that is tangible, because I think, I see heads nodding, I think we all want, want to make this happen, and I understand that we want to make it happen legally, but.
And get it right, absolutely.
Thanks.
Was that a motion?
Well, does that need to be a motion?
Do you need a motion?
I just need consensus.
We are directing our attorney to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And bring it back to, so, Tim?
One thing, I, I was going to say the same thing, and Amy just beat me to the point. But, you know, and I really want to make sure we really look at this, and, and if the bridge can be a part of it, then I think we really need to factor in on a few of the other businesses, and I don't want to see us collecting a whole bunch of extra money for the city for this, for this expense. So I think we really need to look, we'll really need to look at this afterwards on the other businesses as well. Thank you.
Emily?
I'd just like to say something to you.
No, wait, wait, please, hold on.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Emily?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to ask if, is there clarification, assuming, assuming there.
Emily, just, council, stay there.
I'm sorry, do I have the floor? I can't tell.
Yes?
Thank you.
Okay.
Has there been clarification, I mean, again, assuming that a fee on bridge things would be legal, and we're going to find that out at some point, have we had a discussion or has there been clarification as to what that fee would apply to? Would it only apply to rides within the Royal Gorge Bridge and Park, or would it also apply to the entrance ticket, for example? I just, I think we should, if we can, provide some clarity as we're talking about it tonight.
My intention was that it apply exactly the same as we are asking it to apply to every other business. I want it to be super, super clear that we are opting in, I think as Ms. Klein so eloquently put it, like we, we want it, we want the bridge to be treated the same as much as it legally can be.
Yeah, and, and just so council is aware, there is an entirely different set of laws related to the applicability of fees as opposed to the applicability of taxes. I absolutely understand council's direction to try to make them imposed on the same type of transaction, but part of the analysis involves that how you impose a fee and what it can apply to is different from the, the same analysis for a tax. So that, that's why we will do our best, but it is, it is not as simply as saying the fee's going to apply to the same thing the tax does.
Okay.
We have confidence in you, though.
And just to add quickly, I, I think there is a difference between, um, charging a tax on a ride, whether it's rafting trip, training, whatever it is, and then at the Royal Gorge Bridge and Park, we have entrance fees, and then we have additional tickets costs for whatever, right? I mean, for the, the big swing and, and some other things, I don't have a list in front of me. So I just want to be sure that we talk specifically about what we have in mind, and then, you know, we're going to find out if we can do it or not, but I, if we're going to try to charge on the entrance ticket in addition to other things within the park, I think we should say that now.
Yeah, that'd be a discussion for a later time. And Amy, you've been up here several times. I have a list of people that actually have put their name in here.
I just want to say something really quick to the, to the attorney.
So, could you come back? These people have waited a long time.
I'm sorry.
So, okay?
Well, can you get a, a written thing from here?
Okay, Christina, Christina Post.
Remember, one minute. I'm kidding. You don't. All right, I'm going to talk so fast. I'm having fun with you. Okay. My name is Christina Post, and I am a member of the, I'm a board member for the Recreation District. Today, I'm speaking only for myself and not on behalf of anyone else. I would like to recognize city council, Ryan, and Mayor Troutman, and say thank you for your partnership and willing, willingness to work towards a solution to see the pool come to life. I know you've taken a lot of heat over the last couple of weeks, but I want to thank you for continuing to work toward a solution and listening to the concerns of all of the citizens at the last meeting. As a new board member and someone who was involved in the pool campaign last fall, I have heard time and time again from this community, no one wants their property taxes raised. I understand that. A property tax increase was not the answer. This is a tax that falls, falls most heavily on the shoulders of the tourists who come through our region. They come here from other parts of the state, other parts of the country, and even other parts of the world to enjoy things they can only find here. This is a tax that will not affect day-to-day items for those who live in our community. I believe this is a tax that fulfills many of the requests that we have heard from voters last November. I know not everyone agrees, because finding something that everyone agrees with is near impossible. Those who live within the city limits will be able to vote on this tax in November. I want to personally thank everyone who has come to these meetings to share their opinions, and like I said, as someone who is new to the process, this has been very helpful to hear from so many people about this. Before I wrap up, I want to briefly speak about what it means to be a part of a community. Every person in this room is part of our wonderful community. Our kids go to school together, some of us might work together, some of us might attend the same church or run into each other around town. Each of us has a responsibility to treat each other with respect, whether we agree on the excise tax or not, whether we disagree on the color of the sky, whatever it is. We are allowed to disagree, we are allowed to have strong feelings, but when it boils down to it, all of us want the same thing. We all want to live in a community that feels safe for our families, safe for our children, and a place where people care about and value each other. I encourage, encourage all of you, myself included, to remember that we all have this in common. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Christina. Where's Rob? Rob Gilkerson? Is Rob still here?
Yep, I'm here.
Are you?
I'm hanging up there.
Okay. Need help?
I got it.
Got it? Go ahead. Whenever you're ready.
Go over there. Oh, okay, that'll work. I definitely make it the two-minute mark, I might make the one-minute mark here, so.
Okay, go ahead.
First week. Um, I was born almost 70 years ago with the. I was born almost seventy years ago at the Fifth and Macon. Longtime resident, as you obviously see. Came back to the city in ninety-five, so I've been here thirty years. I have a home up on Macon, just a block from here. Lower income. My annual salary is probably only about thirty thousand a year. But as a senior, this tax will not affect me whatsoever. I support it completely. My parents' generation created the Recreation District for us baby boomers to have someplace to swim, to learn how to swim and not drown in the river. My parents' generation even had fundraisers for the St. Thomas More Hospital. They were so committed to this community. I'm ashamed of my fellow citizens for not supporting this. As a board member twenty-five years ago, from two thousand, two thousand and four, the pool was wore out then, and we tried several times to get that thing rebuilt, to get something new in there. So I encourage City Council to vote yes on this amendment, or whatever it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Ed Norton in the room? Oh, there he is, so go ahead. How's the weather outside?
Well, I want to, I was going to address that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
No, no, go ahead, just go ahead.
Thank you and the city administration for allowing Glenda DeBecker, your stormwater technician, to take over my cooperative weather service duties for giving it up after twenty-four years. But I'm glad it will continue under the auspices of the city, so thank you very much. I'm not here to debate the merits of the excise tax, but I want to comment on the process that has gotten us to this point. I was part of the review team in the initial planning process for the new pool last fall. I think that process was very thorough. And I trust that the process which produced this most recent plan for new pool was also thorough and incorporated public input. The Rec District Board and the City Council heard the message from the first vote that citizens wanted you to find another funding source to operate the pool other than a property tax. So the concept of the excise tax is now to this point. And social media is on fire again, accusing the Rec District and the city of not being forthcoming, not involving the public, of doing things illegally, and at the extreme of being corrupt. I want you to know, as well as those on social media, to know that I believe you and your staff members have acted with due diligence and good faith. The options put forth were discussed and debated at open public meetings. You've listened, and with limited choices available, you're putting forth another option to the citizens of Canyon City. I believe the council and the Rec District Board have been honest and forthright, and I trust the efforts you have made to get us to this point to again provide the voters with an option to bring back a much-needed public swimming facility to this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Ed. Chris Gunfett? Is Chris here? Oh, there he is. Did I say that right? Okay. I got Chris right, though.
Greetings. Hello, everyone. I'm Chris Moffett, citizen of Canyon City, Chris Gunfett. Actually, my last name changed, I apologize. Thank you for coming up with an excise tax. It's a great idea. First, I want to acknowledge that at our last meeting, I let my frustration show, and I made a comment about the train's bullshit billboards and told the attorney to tell his client he sucks. And for that, I want to apologize. That's not the way to behave. And I stepped out because I knew I'd crossed the line, and I appreciate the chance to return tonight with a clearer head and a constructive voice. Canyon City has always taken pride in being a place where families can put down roots and children can grow up safe, healthy, and connected to the outdoors. A public swimming pool is a part of that promise. It's where kids can learn life-saving skill. Grandparents can exercise, and teens can gather in a setting that helps them active and, stay active and engaged. Communities that invest in their young people build a future that's strong and welcoming for everyone. I also want to thank the city for working hard to design a plan to operate the pool without adding new costs for Canyon City residents. That commitment respects the people who live and work here while making room for an amenity that benefits us all. The visitor tax before you is a modest, practical way to make that investment. At only 2.25%, it applies solely to tourists, not to locals. It lets us capture a small slice of the dollars already flowing through town and use it to support something that every family can enjoy. Visitors benefit from our streets, emergency services, river access, parks, and restrooms. This task simply asks them to share in the costs of the amenities that make their trip possible. A modern pool also signals that Canyon City is a place where families can build a life. Parents considering a move look for safe recreation, good schools, and healthy activities for their children. A pool tells them we care about kids, wellness, and gathering places that make people proud to call this town home. That makes it easier for our rafting outfitters, restaurants, and shops to hire and keep the talented staff they need. People who want to stay here raise families and invest in the community. And honestly, it's going to make it a little bit easier to be sitting behind a pickup truck from Texas towing a camper up Highway fifty, knowing that a tiny part of their vacation dollars are helping us create something lasting for our children, while locals won't pay that tax at all. This is our chance to strengthen Canyon City, give kids a safe place to learn and play, and make this an even better town for families to grow. I hope you take it.
Thank you, Chris. Cooper? Is Cooper still here? Cooper Trahearn? Oh, there you are.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Cooper Trahearn, and I'm the board president at the Rec District. But like Christina, these are all my own personal views and not on behalf of the Rec District. Like most of the people who speak on this, I grew up in Canyon City and decided to move my family back here in 2017. For the Rec District, I'm going to present some, some factual context around the process that's gone into this. From the time that the Ichabon Pool was closed in May of, of 2023, we had our first public meeting in July of 2023 to discuss the path forward. During the feasibility study process, we had our first presentation on February 28th, 2024. This was the first of three public meetings. We also had two different focus group sessions, four surveys, monthly board meetings, two joint meetings between the Rec District and City Council. We held thirty-six public presentations about the issue and had three different recorded virtual meetings. This year, we're in that same design process. We continue to hold our monthly meetings, joint meetings with the city. And we also have a few meetings coming up that I want to make note for everybody. October seventh and twenty-first are the future meeting dates. The locations are still TBD, but I encourage everybody here to attend those meetings. In the election last year, the, the board of directors heard the public. We, we understand that increasing a property tax is not favorable, and several pollsters around the state said that a property tax ballot question would be unlikely to pass. So given that recent history, the board would like to move forward with this excise tax. And we just want to reiterate to the community that these excise taxes are on tourism. They will not affect the pocketbooks of our local community here. A similar one is in Vail. They passed a lift ticket tax in nineteen ninety-two, a four percent tax on all lift tickets for the mountain. And that excise tax is still in place today and is one of the largest revenue drivers for the city, paid for by people who are visiting the community, not by locals. We're also continually working with the partners at the, at the city and the school district. And I want to, rather than relitigating what was in the ballot last year, I want to point out a couple of things. That the voters last year wanted to move forward with the indoor-outdoor option. That was apparent with the yes vote. So pulling back on that would, would not be an option. That would create some taper issues. Secondly, the school district offered to provide land due to the year-round option. A seasonal option doesn't provide them with the access to create things like a swim team. So without this option, the school district likely would not have provided that land, which makes that a necessity to make this project a reality. Also, if there was no school district land to add that parking lot, then we would likely have to go to a smaller footprint, and the city would likely would not have vacated 12th Street, and we'd be back to one small body of water with little to no parking, which would have created code issues. So with all this context added, I'd like to thank the City Council, the school district, and the partners at the Rec District for collaborating so well on this. It's a, it's a difficult thing to do, especially with taxes, to do across so many entities. Canyon City definitely deserves a pool. This excise tax is a balanced way to do that, and I believe that we should have the visitors who come to our community share in this investment. And I'd also like to make note, for, for anybody here, I'd be happy to stick around and answer any questions from the Rec District standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Cooper. Go ahead.
Cooper, sorry, or sorry, President Trahearn. I believe you said that the next two Rec District meetings are October seventh and twenty-first, and that the location is TBD. Could folks go to ccrec.org to find out the location once that has been determined?
Yes. I believe there's been discussions. The first one will likely be at CCMS, and the second one may or may not be in this room. Those are still TBD, and I know that Kyle has been in talks with Ryan on that.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you again. Jennifer Van Iwerden. Is Jennifer still here? Well, you're, you're a hearty person there.
All right. Good evening. I would like to take this opportunity to express my sincere appreciation for your commitment to representing the wishes of the citizens of Canyon City. In November 2024, the majority of our community voted to approve funding for the construction of Aquatic Center. The design of this facility was developed through a thoughtful and transparent process, which included numerous public work sessions and planning meetings to ensure that stakeholder import, input was carefully considered. The proposed size of the pool was clearly communicated prior to the vote. Equally important, voters made it clear that day that they did not wish to assume the ongoing tax burden for operating the facility. You've listened. By thinking creatively and seeking solutions outside of traditional approaches, you identified a funding mechanism that avoids placing additional financial strain on Canyon City families and businesses. Instead, this plan appropriately shifts the operational cost to the tourists who visit our community. Thank you for your leadership, for listening to the voice of the people, and for ensuring that the Aquatic Center becomes a reality without placing the burden on ongoing costs of families in Canyon City.
Thank you. Bob Stovall, I see you sitting there, Bob. Come on down.
Thank you. I just got forward and sat down. You make me stand up again. Hey, I am Bob Stovall, and I am speaking individually, not representing any organization. And I'm here to support an aquatic facility, the one we planned and designed. I've been a part of this process. It's already been discussed, and I've seen some really neat ideas come out. Now, I think there are probably some older folks here who might look forward to using that facility for exercise and recreation. There are probably some parents and grandparents here who might look forward to having their kids go there and learn how to swim and participate in competitions. But I want to talk about the people that aren't here yet, the ones that aren't born. We're talking about something based on the history of Ichabon, if nothing else, that's going to serve a couple of generations of people that haven't been born yet. Now, all we need to do is figure out how to come up with, oh, about half a, half a million, five hundred thousand dollars. That sounds a lot less. That's about half the operating cost. I want to point out something else. Do you know where that money's going to go? A lot of that is going to go to pay our kids to be lifeguards and to work in the snack bar and to do other services at that pool. The money we're talking about raising between the excise tax and the fees to use the pool will pay a lot of our kids and a few of our adults salaries to maintain that. Oh, yeah, they got to buy some chemicals and stuff. But that's, that's where that money's going to go. And we've already said we want the pool. Why don't we raise the money to pay a few people to work in the pool for us? That way, even an old man like me might have a facility that he can at least go walk around in and get some exercise. And as Chris pointed out, we'll have some kids that can learn to swim before they go play in the river. And we'll have a high school. I actually just snuck out and went over to the high school and, and talked to Bill Summers over there. He really wants to have a swim team for his high school. So I know there's a little problem here with, with a couple of folks. I understand what the rafters said about how it might affect their confidence. And I really appreciate their input. I mean, those are, those are citizens here. But bottom line, folks, is, as Mandy Reed said, "By golly, we deserve this pool, and let's, let them tourists put our kids to work, working at the pool, so we can all go play in the pool." Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, Melissa Mines. Is Melissa still here? There she is. I knew you were here.
Hey, there. Thanks, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Melissa Mines, and I wear several different hats when it comes to this pool. First of all, though, I am a swim, swim mom, swim slash river mom. And then I'm also on the Rec District Board with Christina and Cooper. And I also have played a role in the campaign over the last year on this upcoming campaign, so full disclosure. But tonight, I'm speaking to you as Melissa Mines, the swim mom. So first, I want to say thank you. I think that the excise tax is a great, like, out-of-the-box idea. You know, we have been already collecting, we're already paying for the construction of this facility. And it would sure be a shame to, to not build this pool. But we can't, right, until we have the operating cost. These operating costs that are going to be raised through this excise tax are going to make this facility affordable for everybody. And that's where I come to my swim mom perspective. My relationship with that Ichabon Pool started like eighteen years ago when I took my little six-month-old daughter to, to get swim lessons. And it ended abruptly in 2023. My kids probably are not going to swim in this pool, but like Bob highlighted, who was it that highlighted? All the future kids that are going to be swimming in this pool. And I just, it was a great opportunity. We had great times surrounding the, the swim community. And, you know, we really need to see this for the future of our kids, so. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Melissa. Randy Escabel. Is Randy still here? Oh, there she is. Of course, she's here.
Good evening. It's getting close to bedtime. So when the old pool first closed, the big question was, "How could our citizens and all the different governments, entities come together to find a solution?" In November 2024, after almost sixty years of RC Ichabon passing to construct that pool by voters, voters finally passed two A and six B. The sales tax began January first, 2025, and is paying for the construction of the new pool. That was historic. Two ballot questions passed for a pool. And now we have three government entities working together. The City of Canyon City, Canyon City Rec District, and Canyon City School District, and citizens. That shows what's possible when we all pull in the same direction. But what didn't pass was the mill levy, the property tax. So instead of going back to voters with the same thing again, the city thought outside the box and came up with this excise tax, or tourist tax, a way to fund operations without putting it solely on the backs of our citizens. And here's where the businesses come in. This tourist tax isn't a tax that businesses themselves pay out of pocket. It's on the customers who purchase a ticket. Businesses will help collect it, and that makes them leaders in this process. I feel that's an amazing thing and makes them another partner in this process. We're all working together. Because these businesses will be the champions who help operate our community pool. Think about it. This pool will be where future raft guides learn to swim, where future employees and leaders have their first jobs. And when people talk about the pool, we'll also be talking about the businesses that made it possible. I know I'll be grateful, and I'll tell people, "Look how our businesses stepped up for this community and made this possible." And it doesn't just stop there. Last month, I went to a swimming birthday party at the Pueblo YMCA. That pool was packed. The room alone was three hundred dollars, plus pizza from a local restaurant, cake from a local bakery. The moms dropped their kids off at the party and went shopping during the party, guilty. And all that money left Fremont County. Imagine if all of that stayed here locally. Voters approved the construction, so the city... Voters approved the construction, so the city looked for another way, one that didn't fall solely on citizens. They chose this tourist tax. I attended the public meetings, I attended the board meetings, I also watched discussions online, and just a regular citizen. So now, the decision is in the hands of the people. In November, the city is giving us a chance to vote, so I encourage you to learn the facts on 2B and decide for yourself on whether or not you want to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Dennis Weed, is Dennis still here? Oh, there you are. Did you want to talk still?
Yes, probably figured that.
Go, Dennis. Go, go, go.
Here, before you start, let me put my glasses on. I actually have notes this time. All right, well, again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and before I even get going, I just want to be 100% clear, I am absolutely in support of the pool. Now, I don't necessarily agree with the exact design we came up with, but hey, you know what, we voted on it, that's water over the bridge, under the, or under the bridge, over the dam, whatever. But absolutely support the pool. Now, everybody knows that Canyon City residents are tax averse. I mean, that's a pretty clear statement. However, occasionally, we do pass taxes, and whether they're property tax increases or sales taxes, we do do them. Some examples are street improvements, the school district building new schools, we've approved taxes to improve fire services, the sheriff's department, the comment, well, and we approved a lodging tax as well. The thing about all of those taxes is that everybody pays them, and everybody benefits from them. It's, and you know, street tax, hey, everybody drives on the streets. You know, and the lodging tax, even though it's limited who collects and pays that tax, everybody benefits from it because it promotes tourism in our area, that's good for business, it benefits the businesses that are actually collecting the taxes as well. However, the excise tax is very, very different. The excise tax is collected by a very, very small number of businesses, you can probably count them by hand. So we'll say there's five businesses that maybe are, without question, would be subject to the tax. And that tax does, oh boy, that tax benefits 17,000 people who have the opportunity to use that pool, but it does nothing to benefit the businesses that collect the tax, or the people who are paying that tax, the tourists, okay? The pool is a city amenity, or a rec. district amenity. So, and I'm running out of time here, so I'll just finish up with this. It's, I've sat up there, and speaking currently, one of the things that I have come to really hate is complainers, okay? Complainers with no solutions. And I think the excise tax is the wrong solution, I'm not going to reiterate now, but I have proposed an alternate solution that doesn't tax anybody, and everything in that alternative solution is 100% within the control of the city and the city council. Specifically, the bridge and licensing new businesses. So I just think we're doing it the wrong way.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Is Matt Alexander still here?
Yes.
Oh, they're in the back there, huh?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council, thank you for all the people that are still here. I know how to clear a room, apparently. First off, I want to say who I am and what I am. My name is Matt Alexander, I serve on the Canyon City School Board, I'm not here in that capacity. I also own Moon Rock Landscaping as a business owner within the community. I'm a Christian first, I'm a conservative, I'm a single father of three, I raised my kids in this community, I watched them grow up playing from the time they were infants, until now they're almost all graduated, I have a senior this year. Had this big, old, beautiful, flowery speech prepared, but I'm not going to go through it because most of those notes have already been hit by everybody else. But what I'm going to talk about is the importance of our community, and the growth within our community. I think that we've put a lot of thought and effort into building this opportunity for our children within the parameters of the school pool. We have an opportunity to build a great facility, to provide year-round opportunity for seniors, for adults, for children, for swimming lessons, and let's face it, the river is dangerous and precarious at times, and it's not the best place to learn how to swim. So this gives us those opportunities that we didn't have before. I love the creative ways that we've come up with an opportunity to bring that tax about. The reality is, is it going to affect us? A small, small, small percent, yes, absolutely. Nothing is without repercussions, so to stand here and say that you will never pay a thin dime out of your pocket for this is an absolute lie. You're going to pay some, they're going to pay some, but it's a great balance and a great opportunity. We have an opportunity for a swim team, we have opportunities for education within the community schools. You get elementary kids and middle school kids, they're going to get an opportunity to partake in physical education within the pool. The school district is working on transferring some property, potentially if this goes through, and people have asked me, how does that work? Well, you have a right hand, and you have a left hand, and you can take a dollar bill out of your right hand, and you can put it in your left pocket, and you still own it. So the city of Canyon City and you citizens will still own the property, it's just going to go from the school to the rec. district, but you still own that property. So I wanted to make that note clear. I graduated high school with Neil Walker, who was an Olympic medalist swimmer, and we had that opportunity for him to train and become one of the greatest in the school that we had because we had a pool right there with opportunity for him to be a part of that. And so if you go back 75 years ago when they were building Ichabon Pool, they weren't just thinking of themselves in that moment, they were thinking of their children, their grandchildren, and all the people that would come beyond them. And we have watched that use its life, and it's over now. And now we have an opportunity to create something that's going to last beyond today and tomorrow. And with my last 30 seconds, I'm going to say this. My heart goes out to Erica and the children, and Charlie Kirk was not shot because of what he said. Charlie Kirk was shot because our kids were listening. God bless you, and God bless America.
Thank you, Matt. Coach, you realize at my age, you're pushing my bedtime. Josh, is Josh Ari still here? Come on up, Josh.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to let me speak. My name is Josh Ari. I grew up in Canyon City, graduating from CCHS nearly 20 years ago. I left after high school, thinking I would probably never move back, it's pretty common amongst my peers. Fast forward 10 years from that, to 2016, my wife and I left the Denver Rat Race, and we moved our family back because we believed raising a family here would provide our kids with the best opportunity for a great childhood. So there's no doubt that Canyon City's changing. We've embraced our rich culture of outdoor recreation, easy access to the mountains, and what it's like to be part of a community instead of just spinning the hamster wheel in a big city. I believe Canyon City is a great place to grow up, and I'm not the only one. There's a trend of individuals and families choosing to stay here, move back, as well as people without local ties, selecting Canyon City over other communities. And this is just one of the multiple forces that is pushing our community forward. So the rec. district was formed in 1965 with the sole purpose of operating the public pool because other entities did not want to incorporate the pool into their budget. The rec. district has since inherited and operated public parks, sections of the Riverwalk, adult sports, youth sports, and kids' club. All of these are amenities to our community. Most impressive to me is that the rec. district has operated these programs without ever receiving a mill levy increase. They're operating on the same budget they were 60 years ago. So I applaud and I thank the volunteer, the board members here tonight, and those who previously served, as well as staff over the last 60 years making that happen. We are blessed with a beautiful section of the Arkansas River that businesses have formed around, creating a successful ecosystem that's powered by tourists. This plan pushes the cost of operating the pool to those tourists without affecting the bottom line of those businesses, collecting the tax, and without raising taxes on fixed-income property owners who were so adamantly against a mill levy increase. Local businesses, the school system, the police, CCPD, the sheriff department, fire department, DOC, hospitals, there are more businesses, compete every day to get top talent into this community. We have to have reasons for people to choose Canyon City and stay here. To attract and retain this talent, many of whom have young families or are planning to have families, there has to be something for the kids to do. It's no secret that communities across Colorado offer a wide array of amenities, nearly all of them having community pools. So I think the city, the county, the school district, the rec. district, they all have a duty to work together, making decisions that will help Canyon City thrive. So I come before you as a citizen, a parent, a coach, investor, business owner, and saying I'm in support of the proposed excise tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh, thank you. Did I, did I miss Gina Chambers?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. I've been waiting for you. Good evening, my name is Gina Chambers. I want to thank city council and the rec. district and the school district.
Could you pull the microphone down, please? Thank you.
Why? For working to keep the possibility of this pool alive. I want to thank voters for passing the increased sales tax to fund the construction of the pool, and I want to thank the local businesses that are currently collecting that tax. We're not done yet, though, we need to fund the pool's operations every year. The raisin property tax didn't pass, and while the trains $100,000 pledge, plus the gorge being taxed, and then finding some additional funding is a good idea, without the gorge currently being on the table, the likelihood of us raising an extra $400,000 annually is doubtful. So we have the excise tax that will essentially be paid by visitors to our community instead of locals. Brilliant, if that's how it actually works out. This is a new concept for Canyon, but it's not a new concept overall. I want to offer voters some encouragement tonight from my own unique experience. Now, I was born and raised here in Canyon, but my husband was born and raised in Branson, Missouri, and his family has been there for generations. I spent close to a decade of my life out there as well. We are no strangers to a tourism tax or an excise tax. Branson is a community even smaller than ours, and when they needed to replace their 45-year-old modest outdoor public pool with one diving board, they successfully used the tax to fund the construction and operation of the Branson RecPlex, a massive facility that provides locals with programming and recreation, but also provides a variety of tourists with it as well. Branson's current tourism tax, which is different from their sales tax or lodging tax, et cetera, is currently at 4%, and new businesses continue to pop up often. I do not think that our 2.25% proposed tax would deter new businesses that want to come to Canyon from coming. Another note is that Branson has the Branson Scenic Railway. It's a heritage train, similar to the Royal Gorge Route Railroad, that offers rides through the beautiful Ozark region in Missouri, and also crosses into Arkansas as well. Now, please hear this, they absolutely collect that 4% tourism tax, it's listed on your bill whenever you check out. So if you're at a point that you're thinking, it won't matter if I vote yes, because if the Royal Gorge Route train is exempt, then we still won't get the pool, please reconsider. Canyon needs a pool, but more importantly, Canyon needs a win at the ballot. Vote yes on 2B. This tax is not only a viable option, it's a proven concept that time and time again has worked nationwide.
Thank you. Well, we've gone through all the, that's the most I've ever had. Wow, that's impressive. So at this time, I have read the first reading. I'll need a motion to approve the first, on first reading, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So would someone like to make that motion?
I'd like to make the motion, but I'd like to make it with an amendment. I realize that it's a little bit unorthodox to specify in an ordinance what, I realize that most of the time you would be more likely to do this administratively or through policy, but I don't think that there's actually a legal reason not to. So I would want to add a section, a new section 315050, that talks about the use of, that's in the section of use of excise tax revenue, and that states, "Any excess revenue as described in subsection B above shall be allocated first and foremost to the development and construction of a commercial and private boat put in and take out at the Clark Station property. Only after sufficient funds have been committed to fully support this project, may any remaining excess funds be considered for other community amenities as authorized by city council." I've sent that already to the attorneys and to Administrator Steven, so if it is council's will to include that, that language, poor Denise does not actually have to write down verbatim. But I just want to say-
I do guess my suggestion would be to vote on the amendment first, so that counts, so that you get-
Okay, I'm happy to amend my motion to just be to add this amendment. I think it's important, like, this ordinance is 99.9% about the pool, that is what the excise tax is for, but I do think it is important to signal to the community and to those businesses that are impacted by the excise tax revenue, what the city of Canyon City is planning to do when it comes to tourism and when it comes to supporting those businesses, because we care about outdoor recreation in our community, we care about tourism in our community, they do shop here, they do sleep here, they do eat here, they are important. So I do think that if there is, if there is excess, excise taxes, we should be very clear about what our first priority for those excise, excess, excise taxes are. Thanks.
Yeah, we did talk about that, so you're correct, and that would come back on second reading, we could amend that. Right now, we're asking for a-
So, so we-
Go ahead, Ryan.
Excuse me, we have, we do have a motion to add an amendment, and so I second that.
So that amendment would be added when it comes back for second reading?
I think Attorney Huffman is asking that we vote on it now, and then we would see it in writing if it passed at second reading.
Yeah, so two things. First of all, you vote on the amendment. If the amendment is approved, then you would vote for the ordinance on first reading as amended tonight.
That's the way I understood it.
And then what would come back to you on second reading is either with or without the amendment, depending on how the first vote goes.
Okay, let's, you're making that as a motion, the amendment, right? Is there a second for that?
And I did.
And John seconded, okay. Any discussion on that? Is it, what? Oh, Emily, did you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I-
That's the discussion time.
If we're going to vote on that, I would like the section and the language repeated, so I know what I'm voting on.
Absolutely. I think you may have seen it in email earlier today, because I knew it was a little bit long, but I'm happy to read it again a little bit more slowly. So it is adding to section 315050, use of excise tax revenue. There's already an A and a B, this is on the third page of the ordinance, so it would be adding a section C that states, "Any excess revenue as described in subsection B above shall be allocated first and foremost to the development and construction of a commercial and private boat put in and take out at the Clark Station property. Only after sufficient funds have been committed to fully support this project, may any remaining excess funds be considered for other community amenities as authorized by city council." And again, just for clarity, because I know a lot of folks don't have that language in front of them, like, 99% of this is about the pool, the pool has to be fully funded first, nobody is talking about taking a dime away for- first, nobody is talking about taking a dime away from that, it's just if there is an extra dime, the first place that dime goes is the commercial and private boat put in, take out at the Clark Station Black Hills Western Gateway Plaza property. Thanks.
And make no mistake, that would be legislative in nature, council is bound by that, it could not put money towards anything else. So as long as that is the council's policy determination, it can certainly be put in the ordinance, the only way it can be amended is by another ordinance.
Correct, that's just like the road tax. It has to be specific. Right, okay. So that's, any more discussion on that?
Do we, do we have a comment from Ryan on the staff? Is there something that we, we need to, I mean, sometimes there are unintended consequences.
Yeah, I think, you know, what, the unintended consequence is that you're putting something into an ordinance, as Corey mentioned, and it makes it harder to add to it later. Normally, this would be a policy decision or a, you know, legislative, not necessarily a legislative decision, so. I think if council's going into it with open eyes, understanding that, that's what would be important.
Any more discussion?
I still have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I had a couple of questions. One, I heard the naming of the property several different ways, and I think we should pick one way, if we're going to put that language in here, I don't think we should put two or three names for the property.
No, in the ordinance itself, as I read, it's the Clark Station property. I was using all of the words that we had used to describe it this evening, just simply when I was describing what the amendment did. Thanks.
So the Clark Station property would, I would suggest we aren't calling it that anymore, so maybe we just want to be careful how we reference that. And then my other question is just in regard to the fact that we're going to have a year-long planning process for the Western Gateway Park, or whatever it ultimately is called, and I assume that this is a part of that, so I just want to be sure that putting it in this ordinance doesn't in any way negatively affect on that robust planning effort that we're going to have.
I don't see it as negatively affecting the planning process, no.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? None? What are you doing? Call roll, please. Quickly.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Okay, we've come to the end of this, I'd like to keep you longer, but you-
No, we've got one more motion. Now you need to vote on the, on the passing the ordinance on first reading as amended.
You're pushing my bedtime. So, all right, so that was the amendment to it, so I would entertain a motion to, to vote on the ordinance. Who am I seeing here? Gerald, go ahead, Jerry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance 14 on first reading.
Second.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Aw, John, go ahead.
I am sorry, the, this is, I just want to say that I grew up in Delmar, California, which was just above San Diego. It was a beach community. The ocean was right there, they had a pool. They had a pool. There's, I have another thing I want to say, this is important. The, I was prepared to offer another amendment to the ordinance tonight, but after hearing our attorney's wise counsel, that amendment might be a poison pill for this whole process. So even though this is the first reading, that there is still a possibility that amendment may be in order on second reading. So I just wanted to say I'm withholding that amendment at this time, and I'm now ready to vote. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call a roll, quickly.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Given the fact that we've explored for two and a half years trying to figure out how to obtain funds to operate a pool, and no one has come forward saying they're going to pay that 400 and some thousand dollars every year, I think that this is our last chance, and it's our best chance, and I vote aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Aye.
Now, I'd like to keep you here longer for several amendments and everything, but you're not going to stay, are you? So, is it a no vote? We're adjourned, thank you.